Thank you, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that Councillor Hutton, Councillor Matic and Councillor Owen will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Mackay that Councillors Hutton, Matic and Owen be granted leaves of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy?
Chair, I wish to advise Councillor Cook will be absent from today's meeting and move that she be granted leave of absence. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Strunk that Councillor Cook be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,704th meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of March 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Mackay that the minutes of the 4,704th meeting of council held on the 14th of March 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public participant here today. I'd like to call on Mrs Susan Davies, who's just entering the council chamber now, who will address the chamber councillors on her organisation Sharing with Friends Foundation. Thank you. Mrs Davies, you'll have five minutes. Once the microphone's turned on, you can stand or sit depending on your preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, Sharing with Friends is a not-for-profit foundation that is committed to addressing the risk of homelessness in older women. Our immediate goal this year is to build a prototype co-housing model that provides safe, secure, affordable and dignified housing for this very vulnerable cohort. Today, I bring you a call to action and an opportunity. As councillors, you already know that homelessness is a serious issue that affects so many people, and older women are particularly vulnerable to this risk. Due to the variety of circumstances such as job loss, divorce, ill health, a whole lot of life events, older women may find themselves without home. The latest stats, 25% of women over 55 live below the poverty line. This is a deeply concerning issue in this country, and we believe that it's a community-wide responsibility to address this problem. Sharing with Friends model targets women close to or at retirement age who have about $120,000 in their super or their savings. We've chosen that as, that is actually the statistical average of a woman retiring today. That's what she's got. So Sharing with Friends is already nationally recognised as an ideas incubator, and we've documented the concept design that you have in your prospectus there. With Minty Ellison's help, we've got amazing community agreements, the legal and the tenure documents, and we've consulted with communities over the past four years with a view to sharing this model as an open source intellectual property thing, freely available to like-minded community groups. So in our shared equity model, five older women live in their own unit in a co-housing arrangement, with each woman buying her own self-contained one-bedroom studio apartment within the complex for $120,000. This also buys her the use of the shared facilities such as the laundry and a single shared car, remember that, and a communal eating space set around a lovely central courtyard. And on exiting, the purchase price is returned to her plus CPI, so she gets that, or her estate, so that her capital is actually preserved, and for the next resident, the price remains affordable. Because the foundation owns the land in perpetuity, similar say to a community land trust arrangement, its land use can be guaranteed ongoing. So our concept plan is set on 800 square metre block and comprises five units, five women, plus the shared sixth unit, plus landscaping and two car spaces. So the city plan defines this as a multiple dwelling, and as a consequence, code assessment requires a low to medium density or a medium density site, and seven car spaces, effectively doubling the land component and rendering the model unaffordable. So considering the newly released Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy, our model provides a diverse and affordable product in the right location and fulfilling four of the eight aims in that strategy. So our model is gentle density, providing an approach that's sympathetic to the low-density character of our suburbs and meets the needs of this important demographic group. In essence, we are offering you a poster child for your growth strategy. So gentle density can be defined as attached, ground-oriented housing that's more dense than a detached house but with a similar scale and character. You will see from our wonderful design by architect Eloise Atkinson that there is nothing to fear from sharing with friends gentle density. It would allow older women to remain in the neighbourhoods they know, live productive lives while supporting each other on a day-to-day basis, staying in touch with family and friends, contributing to community life and feel independent and safe, both financially and physically. So our call to action is threefold. First, we ask the council for a block of land, just for the prototype, not ongoing, with appropriate zoning and amenity allowing an immediate start in our first groundbreaking community. Second, we ask that you review the city plan to recognise alternative housing models like ours in your sustainable growth strategy, so that they can be established in low-density areas. And thirdly, we seek your help. We have actually happened to have lodged a submission in the Pathways Out of Homelessness scheme, and we did that last Wednesday, so we seek a generous look at that one.
Mrs Davies, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Is the Chair responding to Mrs Davies? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. And Mrs Davies, thank you very, very much for sharing these ideas and for your speech in advising us. And I understand that we've also been given some documentation that will help us to process everything that you said in the five minutes. And of course, we know that the cohort of women 55 and older is one that is at great risk. I'm pleased to say that one of our previous Pathways Out of Homelessness was specifically for women who were 55 plus, and that was a great success. I attended the launch after the programme, and it was fantastic to hear the stories of these women who had benefited from that Pathways Out of Homelessness grant. It certainly made a huge amount of difference to them. So council recognises your objectives to design and to deliver affordable, safe, secure homes for older women, allowing them to live privately and with dignity. We know how important that is. So I congratulate Sharing with Friends on incorporating universal design principles, so that the homes proposed continue to provide access in later life through design features such as wider doors for wheelchair access. And the Shrima Council is focused on both current and future housing needs, so that Brisbane's growth is sustainable, managed and planned, and residents have opportunities to live in a home and a location that is right for them, just as you've mentioned. So we have just released the Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy this month, and our housing and homelessness strategy outlining some of the important work that we are undertaking, our priorities, our initiatives and our achievements to facilitate affordable housing supply and diversity within our region. So your comments today are very timely, and I'm sure that Councillor Allen has been taking notes, and I thank you for that. I'm also thrilled to hear that you have put in a proposal for our Pathways Out of Homelessness programme. The Lord Mayor and I are absolutely thrilled with the success of that programme, and it was launched in 2019 and has so far assisted 3,700 Brisbane residents experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness. Now, I understand that you have also been in contact with my council's community development officers and that they have connected you with some of our community partners that may be able to support in the initiatives that we're talking about. And I also understand, of course, that we're awaiting the outcome of the Pathways Out of Homelessness grant processes. So again, one of the things that we are most looking forward to is working with the state government. They are doing an audit of land, so again, another critical part of what you were talking to us about today, and the importance of the state government and all levels of government working together on these projects is just so important. We're hearing some of the shocking statistics that are happening in that space right across Australia, but unfortunately, this state is not in a good place, and so we're very sad about that, and we will do everything that we can to help that situation. But we do look to the other levels of government to support us in those initiatives. So thank you once again for addressing the chamber today, and I wish your organisation every success in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs Davies. Thanks for coming in. Billy Wilshere. Councillors, are there any questions to the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on Friday last week, Time Magazine announced that Brisbane was one of the 50 greatest places in the world. Can you please update the chamber on how your vision to make Brisbane even better is paying off?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councillor Hammond. I would say our vision to make Brisbane even better, because it is a shared vision, one that is grounded in a love for this city and a desire that it gets better and better each year, and it has been. It has been. We are obviously, like every city around the world, facing challenges, and the big part of those challenges come from the sheer pace of growth, because people want to be here. People want to live here. People want to come here. People want to visit here. And it was really heartening to see Time Magazine nominating Brisbane as one of the 50 greatest places in the world. Now, we've known this for a long time. We've always, we've always had it as the greatest place in the world in our minds, but it's good that other people are starting to realise as well. And so to have that accolade from Time Magazine, a magazine that each week has 20 million subscribers and who are looking online or at the hard copy version of it, that is an important accolade for this city and shows that this is a city with massive momentum, is a city, as I said, that people want to come to, people want to live in, and will continue working to make sure that it gets better and better. But if you have a look at some of the examples of precincts that were highlighted by Time Magazine, it is definitely the case that this administration has been supportive of the creation of those vibrant precincts. There's no doubt about it. If you look at the James Street precinct and the Callisle Hotel, that whole thriving area, mentioned by Time Magazine, one that we have actively supported and helped to grow. And that goes as well to the Queen's Wharf development. We, even though it is state land, we have always been supportive of that proposal. It goes to places like Howard Smith Wharves, who we have worked with to deliver a world-class precinct and one that people love to go and visit, one that was opposed year in, year out by the Labor Party. Not only opposed by the Labor Party in the council, but the Labor Party state government as well, even though they were quick to be at the opening, the red carpet opening of that place. When the red carpet was rolled out, they came in droves, but when it came to making the tough decisions to get this up and running, they opposed it. And so that is the sorry state that we see. We see particularly this opposition, where they spend so much time trying to talk Brisbane down. They spend so much time trying to talk the work of this council down and the offices in this council down, because all they can see is the political lens. And rather than having a vision for a better Brisbane, they have a vision that sees them talking down Brisbane each and every week, that sees them criticising and focusing on the negatives each and every week. Yet, people who are outside the political bubble of the Labor Party can see that this city keeps getting better and better each year. And we rise to meet the challenges, and we work to make sure that we can house more people through our Sustainable Growth Strategy and through a whole range of other initiatives. We rise to make sure that we can upgrade our infrastructure, whether it's better public transport, new bridges, whether it's road upgrades like the Indrapilly or Mogal Road corridor upgrade and so many others that are happening around the city. We are investing in these things because they will deliver a better Brisbane. On the other side of the coin, sadly, we have an opposition that just wants to talk Brisbane down, want to criticise, they want to be negative, but they offer no solutions, no alternatives. All they offer is party politics, smear and fear. And so we will continue to be focused 100% on delivering a better Brisbane, and we thank the Time Magazine for acknowledging that Brisbane just keeps getting better. And just like the UN last year acknowledged the work that Brisbane had done in the sustainability sector and also Sustainable Development Goals, we are getting international recognition for this city, and it is a good thing, and it is only the beginning, because we know that Brisbane's time in the global spotlight is only just gearing up. And we are proud of this city. We are proud to continue investing in the things that need to be invested in to make this city even better, to create stronger communities, to provide more housing for people, to make sure they have infrastructure and transport to get them around this city. All of those things are absolutely critical if we want to maintain our position and grow our position. We are focused 100% on those things. It is sad that others in this chamber are focused on tearing this city down, on criticising, on negativity. Mr Chair, we will continue to be relentlessly positive about this city, because it is a great city. We love this city and it keeps getting better every day.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane is facing a major bus driver shortage, and this LNP administration must be held responsible. It has been reported that there were over 200 disruptions statewide on Friday, with the bulk of these being right here in Brisbane. Serious safety concerns, pay disparity, very poor working conditions under this LNP have changed Brisbane City Council from an employer of choice to a workplace to avoid. Lord Mayor, how could you be surprised that your LNP council's anti-worker agenda resulted in this major shortage of bus drivers here in Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Well, isn't it interesting? I just talked about the negativity that this opposition brings, and here we see it again. Well, it's interesting. When we engaged, appointed our new Transport for Brisbane manager, she was very familiar with Brisbane and our bus and transport operations, because in her previous job in working for Transport for New South Wales, she was actually sent here to investigate how we have far less of a problem with bus driver shortages than they do in New South Wales and other parts of Australia. And she knew that we were doing something right here, and they needed to learn from what we were doing. Now, I'm not sure, Councillor Cassidy, if we're also responsible for bus driver shortages in other parts of Australia, but it is an Australia-wide issue, just like it is an issue in every single industry at the moment. There is a shortage in just about every single industry. But the good news is Brisbane has supported our bus drivers really well over a long period of time. And what we're seeing here is far less of a challenge than other cities are facing in the same area. Now, let's put this in perspective. There are, and there have been, some trips cancelled because of a shortage of bus drivers or when bus drivers call in sick, and we know that there is a lot of flu going around at the moment. There's a lot of sickness in the community. And so if they call in sick, our first job is to get on the phones to find replacement drivers. We do that. And as a result of the work that we do, there has been less than 1% of trips across this city in recent times cancelled, less than 1%. Now, you hear Labour trying to create this massive issue here and somehow say that it is as a responsibility of the Brisbane City Council, is a nationwide issue, and we're doing better than most other places when it comes to dealing with this. I'm not saying it's not a challenge, because it is, but it's a challenge that we are all facing across Australia and indeed across the state. They are facing these challenges in other bus companies around South East Queensland as well. And Councillor Cassidy mentioned that the majority of the council trips were in Brisbane. Why? It's because the majority of the bus trips are in Brisbane. In fact, in the surrounding areas, they have such little service when it comes to buses that it's not surprising to hear those figures, because we have the lion's share of all bus services across the state. We carry two-thirds of all passengers in South East Queensland on our network and...
Councillors, please. Councillors.
And, Mr Chair, let's go through some of the practical actions that have been introduced just in recent times. First of all, we've been investing significantly in upgrading facilities and safety and standards for our workforce, including our bus drivers. Now, I know this one is of interest to Councillor Cassidy. We've invested since June 2021 in upgrading more than 200 different facilities that benefit drivers, and whether it's toilet facilities, whether it's other facilities such as lunching facilities or meal facilities, a whole range of facilities across the network are being upgraded. And in fact, 23 toilets have already been upgraded across the network, and there are seven toilet upgrades underway right now. Every bus is fitted with anti-shadow film, CCTVs, emergency buttons, duress alarm, GPS and radio connectivity, and every single bus has a barrier. Every single bus is fitted with a barrier, and that barrier was selected based on consultation with the drivers in themselves. But more importantly, we have been investing in our drivers by paying them more as well, by paying them more. And so Councillor Cassidy conveniently forgets about this, but they've had a 30% pay rise over the past decade. And in fact, if you listen to the RTBU, who will be the loudest people to say if we're not paying drivers enough, they just posted late last year after the recent pay rise, RTBU Queensland branch put on their social media, RTBU wins! Pay increases ranging from 7.4% to over 8%. That's on their social media. This is a little bit inconsistent with what Labour is saying, isn't it? Now, we will forget about the fact that the RTBU had nothing to do with the increase and that we awarded increases right across council, and in fact, there are a few recalcitrant unions who are holding up the EBA process. We will forget about that for a second. The point is, we gave the drivers the pay rise, we gave our council staff the pay rise that they needed in a time when we're seeing inflationary cost increases. And so we continue to invest in our drivers and their facilities.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrima Council's upgrade of the former Indrapilly roundabout has made significant progress this year. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in this project, including what can be achieved when different levels of government work together?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to Councillor Mackay for his question and his ongoing keen interest in this project, which sits at the heart of his community, which will make a material benefit for the people of the Western Suburbs and in particular Walter Taylor Wood. This project was born from a commitment between the Shrima-led council and the federal government to fix local roads. Now, to the question that Councillor Mackay asked about council's ability to partner with other governments, well, this council, the Brisbane City Council, is a lead council for delivering federally funded projects, including the Urban Congestion Fund projects. The new government has put a big question mark against them, likely to not proceed, but we, when they were partnered with us and the former government, we delivered projects in all corners of this city. On the topic of Mogal Road, I wanted to remind the chamber that the crash history at the former roundabout was 32 crashes and 17 hospitalisations between 2013 and 2018. And there have been seven, I note some interjections that indicate that that would be a tolerable amount. There's a very...
Councillor Johnston, please.
Unusual interjections indicating that's a tolerable amount of hospitalisations. I don't agree. I don't agree with that. I think that it must be addressed. There have been seven further incidents between January 2018 and January 2022, four requiring medical treatment, one hospitalisation and two minor injuries. We know that the vast majority of people in this city drive or are passengers in cars regularly, and it's our job to ensure that the roads that they use are safe and efficient. The upgrade is designed to improve the experience for road users as well as pedestrians and cyclists and other people who have never been able to get access to that site. It is a notoriously difficult site to get pedestrian access to, but now, under our proposal, it will be actually safe for both pedestrians and cyclists as well as motorists. Those, while the project provides fire pedestrian crossings that didn't exist before, and this is on top of a whole range of underground service work. Now, when many people view a road project, the most difficult and most technically challenging part is actually the subterranean work that a lot of people don't actually see. And that's why I want to take a moment here in response to the question to talk about the sorts of things that councillors had to do that you don't see. So as part of stage one, we have had to lay 3.5 kilometres of new Telstra cable, 2.5 kilometres of new drainage pipes, 1 kilometre of new sewer pipe, 3 kilometres of new water pipes, 2 kilometres of underground Energex cabling, 2.2 kilometres of ITS cables, the removal of 8,800 truckloads of soil from the site, the pouring of... And so now I move to some stats about the construction itself. The removal of 8,800 truckloads of soil from the site, 22,500 tonnes of concrete, 1,440 tonnes of reinforced steel and 117 pre-stressed concrete bridge beams will be installed. The groundwork has been laid so that we can see already what the overpass will start to look like. It seemed mere months ago that that Audi dealership at the end of the centre, at the end of the centre of the worksite was just a, and this was still at the centre of the worksite, and this was a bit of a dream for this community to be able to have these improvements. But I assure the Western Suburbs that these works are ongoing, a partnership with a $50 million contribution from the federal government, where they worked with us to ensure the progress of projects that are beneficial for all members of the community. But the issue is with projects such as these is we need ongoing support. And I see that the current federal member does not support major road projects. She does not believe in a better future for all of us, merely those people who support her. And I wanted to make a point to those listening, that when you hear the Greens say a better future for all of us, they mean, and especially not for all of you, the people who need, who rely on projects such as this, who have to go to work each day, who have to satisfy and pay the bills and live our lives. So I just ask that the new government consider their position in partnering...
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's been three years since council announced a pre-feasibility study into a new bridge between Chelma and Indrapilly, and one year since public consultation closed. What are the outcomes of the public consultation and the recommendations of the pre-feasibility study? Why are you keeping them a secret?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I'm not sure about those timeframes being correct. I'm happy to confirm, but certainly we did in recent times talk to the state government about the need to do some work on a new crossing. And what we determined to be a new crossing is a new bridge in the area that Councillor Johnston has referred to. Now, this is obviously one of those...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Councillor Johnston.
Is the Lord Mayor actually saying there's going to be a new bridge? Because that's what you've just said. I'm asking about the pre-feasibility study, public consultation and the recommendations.
That's not... Councillor Johnston, please. Sit. That's not a... That's not a point of order. The Lord Mayor is addressing the question. Lord Mayor.
Well, we're certainly not going to be putting in a vehicle ferry if that's what councillor Johnston thinks. It's not hard to make the assumption that a bridge would be part of the consideration that has to be made. But certainly there's work being ongoing to determine what the appropriate options are. Now, councillor Johnston will well remember that there was a pivotal or an important milestone point where the Witten Barracks site was up for sale and that was a site that we knew we had to secure.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, my point of order is on relevance. The question was, what are the outcomes of the public consultation and the recommendations from the pre-feasibility study? Can the Lord Mayor please answer the question?
Councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order. The Lord Mayor is addressing the question.
And so as I was talking about the Witten Barracks site, if that hadn't been secured by the council, then there would be no opportunity to build any future infrastructure through there because that is obviously part of a potential landing point for any new infrastructure that goes in. And so by securing that land, not only did we help future-proof that area for infrastructure that might go in in the future, but we also have created an amazing community precinct there, which includes a facility that's heritage listed that we're doing work on at the moment to create a new community centre. Also, the landing point for the Indrapilly Riverwalk infrastructure, which is really well-used and helping to take cars off the road and create safer ways of getting to and from both Indrapilly Shopping Centre and also the university precinct. But, so that was the right decision. And that has enabled us now to have the chat and have the discussion with the community about what are the options going forward. Now, in terms... In terms of releasing a final report on this, we're not at that stage yet, but we're certainly looking forward to being able to have this discussion with the community because it's an important one to have. What I'd be very interested to know though is what councillor Johnston's position is on this particular opportunity. Is this something that she is in favour of? Is she in favour of a new bridge or is she not in favour of a new bridge? Because in my mind, it's not really clear. We know that Minister Bailey is definitely in favour of a new bridge for cars, a new car bridge.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Relevance, my question was, what are the outcomes of the public consultation? It closed over a year ago now. And what are the recommendations of the pre-feasibility study? The Lord Mayor has not answered the question and our community is interested in this information.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. I don't uphold your point of order. The Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
Thank you. And the community would be interested in whether councillor Johnson supports a bridge or not. And if so, what type of bridge? And if so, what cost of a bridge that she would support and how it should be paid for and who should pay for it? These are all questions which I'd be interested to hear answered by councillor Johnston. Because we know that councillor Johnston is really good at one thing, stopping projects happening in her area, stopping progress in her area. She is good at opposing things, she is not good at supporting things. So first, I would be very keen to hear councillor Johnson's detailed views on this. But certainly when we're ready to be in a position to go to the next steps, we will do so. This is an issue that we are taking very seriously and making sure we do the work, just like we did with the North West Transport Corridor, where we came up with some real important opportunities for the future of transport in the northwestern corridor. And we said that those opportunities should be underground, whether it's a rail line, new motorways, opportunity for Brisbane Metro to be extended up to Chermside. These are, these are opportunities that we take seriously because we are focused on the future of our city. And unlike certain councillors, we're not just focused on opposing things for the sake of opposing things for political reasons.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, you've just informed the chamber about how essential it is for governments to work together to deliver major projects for residents. With stage one of the Mogal Road upgrade well underway, can you please update the chamber on what is happening no more than seven minutes down the road?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And can I thank councillor Adaman, who too is a wonderful advocate for the Western suburbs. He's been a wonderful supporter of the Indrapilly roundabout project and all of the Mogal Road corridor projects, both stage one and stage two and their component parts. Can I say he rightly identifies that one of the problems with the corridor is the state-controlled component. And that is what councillor Adaman was inferring to. Roughly from the Western Freeway West, that is a state-controlled component of Mogal Road. That is a, there are a number of shortcomings and in particular, the Kenmore Road roundabout, which is an appalling intersection, which is controlled by the state government. Now, if you recall only moments ago, I discussed how the federal government proposed and we secured through council a $50 million contribution to do the Indrapilly roundabout upgrade. The federal government also worked with the state government and gave them $12.5 million to upgrade the Kenmore roundabout, which would have been a $25 million project, 50/50 co-funded by the state. It is a project with, if you are at all aware of what life's like in the Western suburbs, residents say something must be done. Something must be done. It is not safe. It's not safe for the users of the shops. It's not safe for commuters through the area. It's not safe for the children at OLR and it's not safe for that local state, this local state primary school there either. Something must happen. It is not acceptable that the state have walked away. There was a proposal, which I will present to the room and I'll have tabled, there was a proposal put forward by the state. It did not receive very widespread community support. And then, and then the state gave up. They walked away, which is totally unacceptable for the corridor, for the operation of that work, but also for the local residents. I recall, I recall meeting with some members of the Mogal Berbari QCWA, who go straight to that intersection and say, that is one of the problems with living in this whole district. Now, what is fascinating about that funding and about the announcement of the project is that the state, and I have here with me a media release discussing the Kenmore roundabout, and it's a co-release about the Everden Park Link Road. Now, this is, the reason I put this forward is because the Everden Park Link Road is complete and the Kenmore roundabout is incomplete, which means it was a choice made by the state government to walk away from those people. It was a choice made by them to not fulfil their obligation. I suspect, and I would have to make further inquiry, but I suspect that the $12.5 million contribution the federal government gave to the state is still in the state reserves waiting for further work. I would suspect that's the case, but I can confirm to the room that the $7.5 million that was owed to us by the state was received overnight. So I can, I can thank the state for passing on the money that was owed to us, that they kept their little hand, little paws in the honey jar on that. And I would, and I would ask them to properly, if they still have the federal government money for Kenmore roundabout, use it for Kenmore roundabout. Use it for Kenmore roundabout. Now, I see, so I tabled that, that media release, but I want to make, I want to also stress the point made by the minister at the time. This is the current minister, who was minister also at that time, direct quote, "The volume of traffic passing through that roundabout today demands action." Demands action. And that is what the Western suburbs will get. And as I say, we're still waiting. We're still waiting. And as I say, so this is a, an embroggerance on the way of life for people in the Western suburbs. It is a major, major shortfall in improving their quality of life. It has been promised by the state and yet here, we also have the local federal member dancing on the grave of the project as well, commending how, how happy she is, how happy Mrs Watson-Brown is to see that there'll be no safety upgrade for students, there'll be no safety upgrade for people who use the shops and no traffic improvement for those who live there. This, this nexus of the Labor and the Greens party to hurt the people of the Western suburbs is not acceptable. It's not acceptable. It's quite clear that because of Mrs Watson-Brown's position, that it's the green tail wagging the Labor dog. I mean, to what extent does the Green Party set the agenda for the Labor Party? We see here that she...
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the deputy mayor. The Brisbane Olympic and Paralympic Games is less than a decade away. One of the concerns people have is events like this make cities less affordable for working people. As an LNP chair responsible for the council's preparation for the Olympics, can you guarantee that housing will be more affordable and more accessible in the years ahead?
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to see whether the Premier would promise more affordability if she's going to put caps on rents, but that's something that's being discussed very much at the Housing Roundtable at the moment. We look forward to seeing what some of the levers are that Premier Palashay. I know how you feel about that, councillor Sri Ranganathan, definitely. But look, I am not going to stand here and make any guarantees on housing prices because we've just had a, an RBA who said the interest rates weren't going up for the next seven years and they've gone up nine times, I think, in the last 12 months. So if councillor Strunk has a crystal ball that can tell us what is going to be happening with interest rates, et cetera, love to see it. And then maybe we can make an informed decision. But I'm not going to go in some gotcha moment on guaranteeing that housing prices are going to be cheaper. What I will say though is that there will be more housing supply under this administration than if you take the risk of a Greens/Labor coalition at the next council election. There'll be no more housing or there'll be public housing coming right across the city. And that's when we will see the prices of housing going up across the city. Last week, we announced the Kerillham Precinct Plan and we make no apologies to make sure that we will definitely increase the amount, amount of apartments and housing and homes that are available in the inner 5Ks of this city. It is without doubt the place that people and young people want to live in this city. And it is also the place that is close to the infrastructure that has already been delivered and will continue to deliver over the coming 10, 20 years as well. Cross River Rail, metro, green bridges, bridges that are already there. It is absolutely ripe for more homes and more dwellings with the public and active transport that it has in this area as well. And we have said it here numerous times, and the Lord Mayor has said it numerous times, that the only thing that will drive down prices in housing across the city is increasing supply. And what do we see week after week? Week after week, we see developments come through here that we're talking about. We see it in committee, we see it in the responses from councillors from their local ward. We don't want any development. We do not want houses. We've seen it in the divisions that they don't support homes and houses being built across the city. And that only does one thing, that drives the prices up. That drives the prices up. And it's not just councillor Sri Ranganathan, it's every time we've had a neighbourhood plan, I think there's been, 85% of them have been said no from those sitting in the opposition benches over the last 15 years. Except for councillor Cumming, who is now spruiking that his greatest achievement in Winham was getting the development and the development industry down there and making sure that there was density. Well, you know what councillor Cumming? Thank you for recognising the work that the Lord Mayor Campbell, Newman, Graham Quirk and Adrian Shrinar have done. And we would love to see councillor Cumming living in one of those apartments in the future and we'll continue to work with our LNP councillor in Winham next year to ensure that they continue delivering the fantastic outcomes that we've seen in Winham and right across the city by making sure we have green, sustainable, affordable housing. It can be townhouses, it can be housing, it can be apartments, it can be high-rise, it can be medium density, it can be affordable housing, it can be key worker accommodation, it can be universal housing, something we are desperately short of. But the more supply you have in the market, the more the housing prices will go down. And it's not just about government building houses. That is not the solution, councillor Sri Ranganathan, through you, Mr Chair. It cannot be all public housing because there's plenty of people that will never ever make the public housing list that are also struggling to get into the market for the first time as well. There is no reason that young people under 30 who are working and making a good wage shouldn't be able to buy into this, into this market. They may not be buying houses nowadays, but there needs to be apartments for them. And that's why we stand proudly beside our housing strategy, the Brisbane Sustainable Growth Plan, to make sure we see those opportunities in long unused industrial areas in our suburbs to be revitalised, what we saw in Buranda three weeks ago, that again, the local council have voted against. Mixed-use shops, commercial and apartments next to the metro, built to rent, next to the hospital in the inner 5Ks. That's what we want to see. Great outcomes, sustainable outcomes.
Point of order to you, councillor Strunk.
Thank you. The deputy mayor is talking about what everyone else should be doing. I asked him a question, what will she do or what will you do?
Councillor Strunk, the deputy mayor has been relevant to the question, but her, her time has expired.
I'm glad that councillor Strunk thinks I'll be here long enough to do it.
Councillor Mackay.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, last week, the Queensland government confirmed they would not be pursuing Perron Park as the site for a new school in Brisbane's Inner West. Could you please recall for the chamber the history of this proposal, including how council worked to get this common sense solution?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Mackay for the question because I know that councillor Mackay has been a passionate advocate for his community on this issue. And I know how hard he has worked to make sure that their voices were heard regarding the location of the proposed new primary school. And it is in no small part, thanks to councillor Mackay and his community, that Minister Grace announced last year that her department would in fact reconsider Perron Park as the site. And just last week, just last week, it was confirmed that Perron Park will not be the site of the new school. Minister Grace acknowledged finally that unprecedented flooding and further community consultation meant that the former Tuong Bowls Club site has been deemed as no longer suitable for a new primary school in Brisbane's Inner West. And I welcome that decision by Minister Grace's department and Minister Grace. And I know that councillor Mackay welcomes the decision because this is a win for common sense. Concerns about the site go back as far as 2020, when the state first started investigating the Tuong and Indrapilly areas for a location. And those fears became even greater when residents became aware that the former Tuong Bowls Club site at Perron Park was shaping up to be the preferred option. Early concerns included potential traffic and congestion impacts to the local area and the proximity of the nearby sewage plant, as well as a flying fox camp along Tuong Creek. And local residents were rightly worried at the loss of green space and amenity to their community, but also for their children's safety. This is a site that has gone underwater twice since, in over, just over 10 years. In 2011 and again in 2022, we saw that the flood waters rose two metres across Perron Park. It was never an appropriate site to put a primary school. And I'm very pleased, as I said, to see that Minister Grace's department finally recognise this. The consultation report is an absolute vindication for councillor Mackay and his community. The report identifies concerns around traffic, safety and parking, wildlife and flooding, all of those things councillor Mackay, that were raised by the community. And of course, the loss of green space and amenity to local residents with an increasing number of people choosing to live in medium and high-density housing. Just over a year ago, I moved a motion here in the chamber, seconded by councillor Mackay, calling on the state government to first purchase, then gift to council, new land required for any proposed new school. And during this debate, Mr Chair, the value of education to the community was recognised, particularly in, as the Inner West continues to grow. A place that was once a university city or town is now home to an increasing number of younger families and it's clear that the Inner West needs a new education solution. But the former Tuong Bowls Club site was never the right place. And I thank again Minister Grace for listening to the concerns raised by councillor Mackay on behalf of his community. Once again, Mr Chair, this is a win for common sense, even though it's taken years to get to this point. But throughout this, I haven't seen any common sense... But throughout this, I haven't seen any common sense at all demonstrated by the Labor Party in this chamber. Because when we first brought this motion to the chamber, they opposed it. Councillor Cassidy stood up in here and dismissed the real and justified concerns of Councillor Mackay's residents as political fabrication. Well, clearly it wasn't, and everybody can see that now. Finally, the state Labor government has come to the party, but it looks like the opposition is still unfashionably late. I haven't heard a peep from the opposition on this news, but they certainly had a lot to say about a year ago. They spoke in spirited defence of the original plan that even the state Labor government has now abandoned. But Councillor Cassidy and the opposition could not even be bothered to show up to vote on the motion. It goes to show, Mr. Chair, that they have a total lack of genuine interest in listening to community concerns. They are only interested in playing politics and when it suits them. But, Mr. Chair, the people of Walter-Taylor know that they have a fearless advocate in Councillor Mackay. It goes to show what strong, responsive representation can achieve.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Further questions. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, Councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, following reports that Brisbane's rates of homelessness have risen faster than any other city, residents who are living precariously are seeking reassurance that council is acting. So without blaming another government, can you detail what new homelessness initiatives are funded in your housing and homelessness strategy released three weeks ago?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair, to the Leader of the Opposition for the question because it does allow me to talk about some of the amazing work that the members on this side of the chamber are doing in terms of our homelessness strategy. We've had a speaker here today, Mr. Chair, that has laid out some of the dreadful things that are happening out there in our community. And part of that, of course, is for women in the cohort of 55 plus. And one of the things that we are particularly doing and which we are working towards, of course, is our Current Pathways Out of Homelessness, which is a programme that has been recognised even by the state government as having done some enormous good for the community just recently. We're very much aware that our latest strategy, which is in fact designed to help work with all levels of government, and I hear through you, Mr. Chair, the Leader of the Opposition saying, you know, what are you doing on this side? What are you doing on this side? This is something that is Australian-wide. This is an issue that every government in Australia is dealing with. We have, unfortunately, in Queensland, a very, very bad track record in terms of the state government not providing us with houses, not providing us with the means for this council to support those that are the most vulnerable. Now, my team within council, our Public Space Liaison Officers, and I want to put on the record here, and I'm pleased to be able to have the opportunity, to once again thank them for their tireless, tireless work that they do out there. And work that, may I say, just keeps getting worse and worse every day. They are out there, day after day, working with the organisations that support the most vulnerable, trying to find places for these people who are living in tents, for women who are living in cars. And guess what? The state government says nowhere to put them. Nowhere. Zero. Zero spaces. Now, the Lord Mayor and I have been...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you. Councillor Cassidy.
The Councillor Howard's been eloquently outlining some of the issues that people are facing here in Brisbane. But my question was what new initiatives are being funded under the Sustainable Growth Strategy marketed as the Housing and Homelessness Strategy? That's the information that we're after, what new initiatives have been funded.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. I believe Councillor Howard has been relevant to the question. I don't uphold your point of order.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, I think it's important to put the narrative around the question that Councillor Cassidy is asking. This is not something that's going to be fixed overnight. This is not something that any government in this country has the answer for right now. We've got people who have set up forums, we've got people that have been talking about this forever. The Lord Mayor, quite some time ago, the Lord Mayor and I went to visit the Pinkenbar site. Here are 500 beds. I'll say that again through you, Mr. Chair. 500 beds available right now. And guess what? We've written to the federal government, we've written to the state government. Have they responded? Crickets.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, Councillor Cassidy.
I know what Councillor Howard is talking about is included in the strategy, but what she's not talking about is an answer to my question, which is what new initiatives are being funded by council. It's on relevance.
And on relevance, I believe Councillor Howard was being relevant to the question. I heard Councillor Howard talking about the initiatives that the council is undertaking. I don't uphold your point of order.
I'm very happy to, if they would give me the opportunity to answer. We've got something called a budget that's arriving very soon in this chamber. And it's at that point in time that we will be able to put some initiatives around the strategy. I understand that's what we just released, is a strategy. So I think it's really, really important, though, through you, Mr. Chair, that we recognise that there are answers right now out there that are being ignored, being ignored by the state government who has the ability right now to do something about Pinkenbar. Right this minute, they could ring up the Lord Mayor and say, thank you. Thank you, Adrian, for raising this. We'd love to talk to you. We've offered. We offer all the time.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired and that ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee Report of 13 March, please.
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 13th of March 2023 to be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 13 March 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Last night, all of our assets were lit up... Yeah, that's right, I'll do that. All of our assets were lit up in green and gold to support the... Okay. Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A.
Please, Lord Mayor.
I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD. Is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totalling $47,490 in 2016 and 2017.
Lord Mayor, are you asking for Seri Adam for the debate?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland team and sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD. Is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Landers.
Point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY Limited, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Thank you. Councillor Mackay.
Point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also the CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016, 2017.
Councillor Adelman.
Yeah, point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is a CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Thank you. Councillor Huang.
Yeah, point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Wong.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within the years 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Vax.
Yes, thank you. Point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Murphy.
Point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Allen.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY Limited, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Cunningham.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Howard.
Point of order, Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Tim.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I did have to beat you to that one. Point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust, PTY LTD, is also the CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland. The council team totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Thank you. Oh, you go, Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
I have a declarable conflict of interest in item A. As I'm a member of the Australian Labor Party, Consolidated Property Groups has provided donations to the ALP to the amount of $57,400. The Consolidated Property Group has an interest in item A as they own the land at 600 Coronation Drive. Accordingly, I will not be participating in this item on the agenda.
Councillor Strunk.
Yes, point of order, Mr. Chair. I have a declarable conflict of interest in item A. I'm a member of the Australian Labor Party. Consolidated Property Groups have provided donations to the ALP to the amount of $57,400, which I have a indirect benefit. The Consolidated Property Group has an interest in item A. They own the land at 600 Coronation Drive. Accordingly, I will not be participating in this item on the agenda.
Councillor Cumming.
Thank you. I have a declarable conflict of interest in item A. As I'm a member of the Australian Labor Party, Consolidated Properties Group has provided donations to the ALP to the amount of $57,400. The Consolidated Properties Group has an interest in item A as they own the land at 600 Coronation Drive. Accordingly, I will not be participating in this item on the agenda.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, sure.
Yep. I've met Don O'Rourke, but I've never taken any money from Consolidated Properties. And it's just pathetic that we won't be able to vote because there are two councillors here that don't take money from developers.
That's not a proper point of order. Councillors, I rise to declare a conflict of interest in clause A. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team. The sole director of 600 Coronation Drive Trust Proprietary Limited is also CEO and Chairman of Consolidated Properties. Consolidated Properties has made historical donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, totaling $47,490 within 2016 and 2017.
Councillor Landers.
Chair, I move that this chamber resolve that as a majority of councillors present have declared a conflict of interest in this matter, deciding this matter be delegated to the Chief Executive Officer in accordance with Section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010.
Seconded. Thank you. The motion has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Mackay that as a majority of councillors present have declared a conflict of interest in this matter, deciding this matter should be delegated to the Chief Executive Officer in accordance with Section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010. All in favour, please say aye.
Hello. Debate?
No. That's... So...
We have to debate it. It's a motion.
It's a procedural motion. It's a procedural motion.
Outrageous.
Jonathan and I could decide this.
Procedural motion. Move to the vote, please. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We move on to other items on the E and C agenda. Clause B. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to go back to the lighting up of council assets. Last night, all our assets were lit up in green and gold to support the 2023 Track National Championships. These championships are the biggest domestic track event in the country with the Anamias Velodrome in Chandler hosting the event. Today is Harmony Day, and to celebrate this occasion, all of our assets will be lit up in orange. Harmony Day began in 1999 and is held on the 21st of March every year. Coincides with the United Nations International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination and obviously something that we fully support. Tomorrow, all our assets will be lit up in red, celebrate the World Science Festival and Curiosity. World Science Festival celebrates a mix of science and art through a programme of workshops, conversations and demonstrations. Thursday is Pakistan's National Day, and all our assets will be lit up in green to support this occasion. There are many thousands of Brisbane residents who were born in Pakistan and there are many more with Pakistani heritage as well. We wish them the best. them the best with their upcoming celebrations, on Friday night the Storybridge Redcliffe Place and Victoria Bridge will be all lit up in red to support World Tuberculosis, World Tuberculosis Day, each year tuberculosis kills more than one point six million people around the globe, campaign aims to raise awareness of this disease including efforts being made to eliminate it, on Friday night the city hall will be lit up in blue and yellow to support the Rotary District nine six two O conference which is being held here in city hall, on Saturday, Saturday our assets will be lit up in purple to support Make March Purple, Make March Purple is a nationwide campaign supported by epilepsy organisations across the country.
sorry, point of order, Mister Chairman.
point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
yes, I've just checked the meeting's local law, can you point me to the section where you say the motion that was just moved is a procedural motion because I can't see that in the meeting's local law and I'd like you to tell me which section you are relying on please.
councillor Johnson, sixteen one A, thank you, lord mayor.
thank you, Mister Chair, councillor Johnson is very disappointed she doesn't have the opportunity to grandstand about this and I think we can do without that, she was certainly elected based on donations from developers.
point of order, Mister Chairman.
yes.
point of order to you councillor Johnson.
yes, Mister Chairman, I refer you to your last answer regarding section sixteen one A, that says that the council must resolve to delegate consideration on the matter pursuant to section two thirty-eight of the City of Brisbane Act, but it does not say that it's a procedural matter and it does say in subsection two that all councillors including the councillors may participate in deciding to delegate or defer a matter, so you have now stopped us from participating in that process and that does not seem to be stating that there is a procedural matter, so.
thank you, councillor Johnson, I.
I would just ask you Mister Chairman, given that you have just stopped us from participating in that decision-making process contrary to section sixteen subsection two, why you have decided it's a procedural matter because that's not what the meeting's local law actually says.
thank you councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order, that section says the option when there's an absence of a quorum that the, the council must resolve to delegate the consideration and decision of the matter which was the procedural motion that was put before council.
point of order Chair, I'm sorry, just from my understanding, I, like I understand that the council must resolve but is it actually defined as a procedural motion, because I, yeah, if it's not we, we probably shouldn't get to debate it.
there was a motion councillors, there was a motion before, councillor Murphy please, councillor Murphy, councillor Murphy please, there was a motion before the council to delegate the consideration of the matter, that was the motion before the council, that was the, what the vote was taken on, thank you.
yes, but Mister Chairman you didn't allow debate, so I'm moving dissent in your failure to comply with the meeting's local laws.
dissent has been moved in my ruling, all in favour please say aye.
aye.
to the contrary no.
no.
the noes have it.
division.
no division, lord mayor, floor is yours lord mayor.
thank you, councillor Johnson continues to interject Mister Chair because she's lost the opportunity to rewrite history and conveniently leave out the part where she was the beneficiary of developer donations in the past which helped her get elected for the very first time into this place, but we won't hear about that today, we'll hear about how she's given up smoking and so, look, that we can do without that, we've heard it all before, we've heard it all before, so for the person that is the biggest bully in the chamber and, and the biggest instigator of personal attacks in the chamber, I object to that, I object to that.
point of order.
point of order to you councillor Johnson.
the lord mayor's comments are outrageous, rude, offensive, inappropriate, I can't think of any other word to describe that offensive attack on me by the lord mayor and I would like it withdrawn.
lord mayor, the, an exception has been taken to the words you used to describe councillor Johnson, will you withdraw those words?
Mister Chair, you heard it, she yelled out grub very loudly across the chamber and then objected, and then objected, so this bullying behaviour we see week in, week out from councillor Johnson where she thinks the rules don't apply to her, well the rules do apply, the rules do apply, we've seen it week in, week out where she launches personal attacks, very personal attacks including calling people grubs, yet she is unapologetic, Mister Chair.
point of order to you councillor Johnson.
in response to the lord mayor's offensive personal comments about me which I have objected to and you are ignoring Mister Chairman, he's repeatedly now called me a bully, he calls me a liar, he calls me dishonest, these are unsuitable meeting conduct acts, I have asked that they be withdrawn, now the lord mayor has not responded to your request and you are allowing him to continue to make unsubstantiated allegations about me and I would like them withdrawn.
point of order Mister Chair, I withdraw because unlike councillor Johnson, I am a reasonable person here and I will withdraw.
point of order to you councillor Johnson.
the rules are applied to me in one way and they are clearly not applied to others, now the lord mayor has made offensive statements about me today and Mister Chairman I am asking you to exercise your role in this chamber and make sure they are properly withdrawn.
thank you councillor Johnson, I asked the lord mayor to withdraw his comments and the lord mayor has said he was, he withdraws the comments, lord mayor.
thank you Mister Chair, on Saturday night between eight thirty P M and nine thirty P M, the lights on all of our assets will be turned off, why, earth hour, that's right, councillor Cunningham knows, earth hour is obviously something that we have supported for many years and something that we continue to support and certainly as being one of the few carbon neutral councils in Australia and the largest carbon neutral government in Australia, something that we continue to promote and obviously not because turning the lights off for one hour changes the world but it does help raise awareness and does make people think about the use of finite resources and how we can do things better. On Sunday, on Sunday night, Make Purple, sorry, Make March Purple light up will return once again, item B, in front of us is the lease in operation of the cafe at seventy-one Macquarie Street, Tenerife, this particular facility is known by locals as the engine room, isn't it councillor Howard, and the engine room is something I'm very familiar with because I was the responsible chair when the opportunity came up to take what had been a closed down derelict facility, key part of our city's history and open it up as a cafe that people can enjoy, and so as the responsible chair I initiated the project and this. powerhouse, no, this is the engine room, this is something different, so this, this is the engine room at Tenerife, not the powerhouse, but the engine room has a very rich heritage and it was built in nineteen seventeen and was operated by the Brisbane Stevedoring and Wool Dumping Company and it was listed, it's listed on the local heritage place register. After a development application was approved in twenty fifteen, council undertook works to rejuvenate the site consisting of new public toilet facilities and a self-contained cafe with the first lease commencing in twenty seventeen, we then, we obviously went into an arrangement with an operator and it's become a very popular facility and cafe for local residents and, and obviously appreciated, but this proposal now is to seek to establish a new lease for a term of up to five years, as is the usual process, the site went out to tender with a commercial site like this and the current lessee M and G Murillo, P T Y L T D trading as Barco and Co will remain at the site, this lessee has demonstrated proven success and the experience in the operation of this venue, they've also established a community focused business model with a commitment to sustainable practices in the stocking of ethically sourced products from local suppliers and producers and they also allow the premises to be used as a meeting space for local community groups as well, the proposal is that the new lease will commence on the first of April and we wish the team at Barco and Co continued success.
thank you, councillor Cassidy.
thanks very much Chair, I rise to speak on clause B and I will note, there's obviously a lot of debate just at the start of all this about whether debate could occur on a motion to delegate a decision to the C E O and my recollection, perhaps it has changed with the subsequent changes to the meeting's local law, but there certainly has been a debate on the motion to delegate that decision to the C E O, there were very strict rules about the content of the original, original item not being able to be spoken about, but there was debate allowed, so perhaps some legal advice might need to be sought there. In terms of the stores board submission for us today, I'm not sure whether the, the lord mayor is suggesting we're making a decision on this this week or not because a couple of weeks ago he got up and very stridently said that these decisions and these contracts that were being issued to private operators to, to take up a council-owned venue were not decisions of this council or his E and C committee, that they were.
point of order Mister Chair.
point of order to you.
claim to be misrepresented.
noted.
so I presume, presume this has gone through in C and C here today and the lord mayor had a bit more to say about this one, that we are making a decision as a council on whether this lease is to be awarded to these operators or not, this is the engine room cafe if I'm not mistaken, located at Tenerife, that was refurbished as the lord mayor said in twenty sixteen, I think he mentioned, that, that budget for the refurbishment of this engine room cafe was set at half a million dollars, he was, he was very proud about this project, it was set at half a million dollars and the, the total came in at one point two million dollars, so we can add that one to the list of blowouts, I'd forgotten about that one, but I do thank the lord mayor for reminding us that there's another project that he personally oversaw which had a massive blowout, but this was of course the cafe that the L N P administration on the advice of officers I'm presuming at the time and because no due diligence was done by E and C or the lord mayor or councillor Shrida at the time was awarded to an organisation that subsequently didn't operate, didn't pay rent, had their licences and their charity status de-registered at the time and of course the, the subsequent, the subsequent leases obviously has performed much better and has been operating in there and no reflection on how that cafe has been operating to date and no reflection on how this leasee will continue to operate if this is passed today, but what we have seen now over a long period of time with leases under this L N P administration to private operators in council-owned sites has resulted in some instances of those facilities not being used by the community, whether it was this very site we have before us today, whether it's the cafe up at Mount Cotha which was boarded up, whether it was sites that were open for people to come and spend money at but their operations resulted in wage theft and time and time again we see risk profiles included in the documents put before us today that don't include anything about workers' rights and the lord mayor said in media reporting a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago now in regards to another lease site in the Queen Street Mall, the Pig and Whistle site there, that those will all be reviewed, those leases are going to be reviewed, I presume to ensure that those kinds of anti-worker activities don't continue with those leases, but where are the assurances, it's something we've raised the third time in this council session now, what assurances are there in place, again, I'm not making any accusations here, but there is a process of which this administration clearly sets out for council offices to go through and, and rate various levels of risk and I can't in here, in these papers that came through civic cabinet are coming to council today, find anything about mitigating against those very, very serious risks that we have seen come, come to fruition at other lease sites to private operators, so again I'm sure the cafe's been operating well in terms of a business because they're obviously seeking to extend that lease and good on them, but I think the process in which this L N P administration sets out for allowing private businesses to operate in publicly owned sites needs a full review, I assumed that's what the lord mayor was referring to in the last couple of months when he was talking about those other sites and where those issues have been, have been raised and proven right, but we don't see any evidence of that here, so unfortunately we won't be able to support this item today.
thank you, further speakers, councillor Howard.
thank you Mister Chair, well it's, it's with pleasure that I rise to support item B which is seeking council's approval to grant a five-year lease to M and G Murillo for the historic engine room in Tenerife, I'd just take a moment through you Mister Chair to say what a shame.
sorry Mister Chair.
oh, sorry.
there was a point of order.
yes, my apologies councillor Howard, I did miss a claim of misrepresentation from the lord mayor.
councillor Cassidy was referring to a previous debate when submissions came through of which one was a lease and then the other one was a stores board, I made it very clear at the time there were two different submissions, one we would be asking to note and one we were asking to approve, this one today we're asked, we're being asked to approve.
thank you, thank you, lord mayor, councillor Howard, my apologies.
thank you, thank you Mister Chair, well I, I did want to just sort of before I get into the swing of saying how fantastic this is for my local community, so what a shame it is that yet again we hear the negativity from the other side of this chamber, these people, do you know how hard it is to run a coffee shop in this, in, in this day and age, incredibly difficult and so, good on all of the people, whether they succeed or fail, good on them for giving it a go and here we have the opposition leader yet again doom and gloom talking about past history years and years and years ago, well, absolutely, I'm, I'm just flabbergasted that he should say what he's just said, let me give you some history, built in at around nineteen seventeen, this iconic small red brick hut has stood the test of time and lived many lives, originally built to house two ammonia compressors that were driven by steam engines to provide refrigeration to the coal storage rooms that were run by the Brisbane Stevedoring and Wool Dumping Company, it was converted to electric motors in the nineteen thirties, its next life began in nineteen forty-two when the U S Navy came to establish an operation and maintenance submarine base with this small hut becoming part of the base that supplied refrigerated goods to the submarines. When the U S left our city, the engine room survived many new owners and many changing uses until it was purchased along with the wharf by Delgetty in nineteen sixty-eight who used the site for general stevedoring purposes, the early eighties saw the area returned to defence with the Australian Navy occupying the area in nineteen eighty-two and renaming it H M A S Morton North, the engine room's use by the Australian Navy was the last time this understated building was purposely used with their exit leaving its future uncertain, Mister Chair, Brisbane in the nineteen eighties was a very different place to what it is today and I'm sure there is, there was much speculation as to what would happen to the engine room as it sat idly on derelict wharves, in nineteen eighty-eight, a year after the building's seventieth year, the Atkinson-led council purchased the site of the engine room as it began the long process of seeking to revitalise Brisbane's inner-city industrial areas, with the industrial sheds and dusty open parking lots of Tenerife wharves now a distant but not forgotten memory, I'm thrilled that more than one hundred years on the engine room now forms a vibrant part of our local community, thanks to the hard work and dedication of the Murillo family and their amazing team at Barco and Co. Whilst a beautiful place to enjoy a coffee and soak in the views over the beautiful Brisbane River, Barco is far from just a pretty face, their dedication to sustainable and ethical practices means that you can enjoy a coffee and a bite to eat knowing that you're helping support small businesses whilst keeping Brisbane clean and green, Barco sources their coffee from micro-lot suppliers, local resident farmers and even their coffee cups are ethical and sustainable, made from coffee bean husks, Barco's passion for sustainable living, ethical business and social enterprise has created a much-loved social hub for locals, the much-loved Anzac Day dawn service by the submariners and the many, many hours of preparation for this event is greatly supported by the friendly team at Barco and I know that this year yet again we will be joining the submariners as each year the crowd grows and grows for this, what is a, a very. the crowd grows and grows for this, what is a very moving, moving service, and to know that the whole community supports that event, but also supports Barco. So I commend Item B to the chamber and encourage everyone to support this wonderful, family-owned small business, so they can keep up the great work in supporting our community and creating a cleaner and greener Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers on Item B? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Yeah, just to say that I do share some of the concerns about the way these tendering processes are going, and I feel a little uncomfortable in general about agreeing to leases when there is only a single tenderer put forward and the tendering process has kind of happened over Christmas, and maybe it's not been the best time for a lot of people who are thinking about starting businesses. But I guess I just wonder whether, as a general approach, we should maybe go back to the market or do a slightly better job of advertising this stuff. I know that there are lots of people in my community who would like to start cafes and other small businesses, but probably aren't aware of these cafes and other premises going up for tender. So perhaps that's also something that the relevant teams can be looking at in the future and just identifying that just because the council lists something on its supplier website or whatever, that doesn't necessarily mean everyone who might be interested in leasing the property is going to find it. So perhaps we need to be doing a little better of a job of reaching out to prospective tenants and promoting these opportunities, because they are good opportunities. And I'm not wholeheartedly or fundamentally opposed to the idea that councils should be renting out some of these spaces to private enterprises. I would certainly prefer that they were rented out to non-profits or social enterprises rather than commercial. Yeah, I get that, Councillor Howard, yeah. I think there are legitimate debates to be had about how we define social enterprises, and I do think that term has become increasingly ambiguous and slippery, and perhaps that's also something that council needs to look at defining a little more strictly. I've had presentations on that in the past, and there does seem to be a lot of wiggle room in terms of what gets defined as a social enterprise, but that's not a comment on this particular leasee. So, yeah, I do still have concerns, and I think it might have been better if we'd slowed down and found more opportunities to get more people to put in tenders, rather than what seems like a bit of a rushed process to be locking in a five-year lease for at what seemed like quite good terms for the location. Thanks.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of what we have here, very straightforward situation of going out to a public tender, but quite clearly being happy with the performance of the existing tenderer, and so very comfortable indeed in renewing that lease for the existing tenderer. And the suggestions that Councillor Cassidy has made are just ludicrous and show that he does not understand how procurement and tendering works in this place. This is the, just remind people, this is the councillor who was quite happy to support a lease to Crusher's Leagues Club, and then oppose the same lease, actually a slightly better lease, being awarded to someone else. So we have no consistency from the opposition on their approach when it comes to leasing. But the simple thing I would point out is this is a case of this administration investing in opening up the heritage and history of our city and making it accessible to the people of Brisbane. So this is a win-win for the community. We invested upfront into a facility, and it is now open to the community, it is used, in fact, for community meetings as well, and provides a wonderful facility that people can come and enjoy a part of Brisbane's rich heritage. And so, we do make no apology for running projects like this. And certainly, there is a really good case for community facilities like this to be opened up for some kind of commercial use. Now, we know that there are certain people in this chamber who do not really agree with that, but it is a position we've made very clear. It is a good thing to activate public spaces and to provide the opportunity for people to get a meal and a cup of coffee in a location like this, right by the Brisbane River. And it is also right next to the very well-used section of Riverwalk, which is patronised by thousands of people each day. And so, this is, you know, just one example of us taking the time to invest in restoring and bringing to life the history and heritage of our city, just like we did with Howard Smith Wharves. Under the Labor Party, that site sat there derelict. And in fact, they opposed our efforts to activate what is an historic site of the city. Now, Howard Smith Wharves is relevant because it is a similar but much larger scale project, where a site was not being used, it was boarded up, it was derelict, it had heritage value, and we decided we would do something and open it up to the people to enjoy, but also to generate some income coming back as well. And so, these are projects that we fully support and projects that we are proud of, because they do have the support of the community. There might be some evangelists who think there should be no commercialisation of any public space, but, you know, what about Footpath Dining? What about Footpath Dining? Is councillor Sri Ranganathan in the Greens suggesting we should wind back Footpath Dining? Because it's commercialisation of public space.
Point of order.
I mean, firstly on relevance, but secondly, I clearly said that I'm not outright opposed to all commercialisations of public space. So I don't understand why the Mayor is opening up this line of debate.
Okay. Lord Mayor, I'll leave you to respond.
So councillor Sri Ranganathan says he supports some commercialisation of public space, just not all commercialisation of public space. I'm glad we have that clarification now. Which commercialisation, we'll be all waiting with bated breath to see. We know that the Kangaroo Point Greenbridge boutique opportunity came up for a restaurant or bar, and councillor Sri Ranganathan opposed that, yet he was, you know, potentially going to be a customer of that site at some stage in the future. We know that councillor Sri Ranganathan thought that places like Otto on the Brisbane River at South Bank should be demolished and handed back to the people. We heard that too. So, look, this is a topic of debate, which, in fact, he has brought on. Our position is very clear and has unchanged over the years on this. We believe in bringing these precincts to life and providing opportunities for people to come out and enjoy these facilities, and also spend a bit of money with local business as well. And that's an approach that I think the community supports. So thank you to all councillors who have spoken on this item, and obviously, we've got a recommendation here to vote on now.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on Item B. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by the Deputy Mayor and councillor Landers. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Close the vote. Plots, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour, four against, sorry, one against, and four abstentions.
Clear that item carried. Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor, councillor Adams, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 and Olympic Paralympic Games Committee report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday 14th of March 2023 be adopted. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14th of March 2023 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning in committee, we had a list of everything that we're doing in economic development to support Brisbane businesses, and I look forward to listing through that very, it might take me 10 minutes to list through it next week. But I just want to remind everybody, one of the biggest ones we've got is the Business Hub, and it continues to go from strength to strength. This week, we've got There's Something About Jen on Thursday the 23rd, from 9:30 to 11:00. So it's for the younger crew within the business industry that want to understand how their generation can thrive in business, and maybe for some of the older crew to learn how they can connect to that generation as well. I just wanted to share some of the feedback we're getting from event attendees, because they're absolutely loving what they're being involved in over there as well. We recently had the social media introduction to online platforms for marketing. The response was, I found the information shared by leaders in their business to be very insightful and practical. The free information given away was gold for small to medium businesses in Brisbane. Many thanks. We also had the Marketing 101, the fundamentals of marketing. Chemo, the presenters were just wonderful, so full of personality and knowledge, I absolutely enjoyed every aspect of this workshop. Time just flew by and I didn't even realise I'd been there for six hours. Wow. Wish that happened on a Tuesday afternoon. Someone also said it was a well-facilitated workshop with a huge volume of marketing information and how to implement it into my business. So it's great to see people are really enjoying the time that they're taking for free seminars, well, that went up to six hours, to really support their businesses, when we know they're so busy. But if Brisbane businesses do well, then Brisbane will do well. Last week's committee report was the host city office on the plans for Kerillpa Precinct, and I'm going to take this opportunity to finish off my question to councillor Strunk to tell him what I am doing to make sure that the housing prices in Brisbane can be low as possible, and that is working through the Kerillpa Precinct Master Plan to make sure that we can bring stock onto the market, to make sure there's plenty of housing and homes for everybody. We looked at the history of this precinct and how it changed over the years as the city has grown, and major events have shaped prominent areas in this precinct, like Expo 88, which was once an area catering for heavy industrial activity, particularly on river routes. We've seen these uses gradually and naturally move further afield to other areas in the city to make way for urban renewal opportunities that have created the vibrant mixed-use communities that we already have there today as well. We're looking to the future and thinking about that next evolution of this precinct, and in time, in particular, for the Olympic and Paralympic Games and beyond. And we're leading into what will be the most important decade in Brisbane's history. So now is the right time to think strategically, ensure these opportunities are leveraged, to deliver the greatest possible legacy for our city. Let's be clear, the Kerillpa Precinct is less than 500 metres from the city centre, with excellent existing and planned infrastructure servicing the precinct, access to open space and world-class cultural facilities. The Kerillpa Precinct is an ideal location to facilitate growth and renewal, to create one of the most sustainable communities in Brisbane. Allowing CBD-style heights for residential buildings in this precinct will unlock a range of new opportunities for new housing, as well as the creation of more publicly available open space, new community facilities, increased investment in infrastructure to support this growing community. As a part of the presentation, we released the precinct investigation map and outlined some of the key criteria that will be used to shape this plan, including, but not limited to, a greater variety of housing types, including build-to-rent and key worker housing, universal housing standards, green and energy-efficient buildings, improvements to public realm, better active transport connections and street scrape upgrades that complement our subtropical climate and outdoor lifestyle, open space and community facilities looking to drive our vision for South Bank 2.0. It is an absolutely incredible opportunity to plan for many reasons, and the first step towards ensuring a broader vision, vision, sorry, to revitalise the inner city as a global destination to live, work, play, visit and invest. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I wasn't going to bother, because I know that this particular administration's pretty hell-bent on this kind of strategy, but I did just want to inject into the debate around the Kerillpa Precinct a few simple points. And I've made the point previously about the shortage of parkland, and I know councillor Adams knows there's a shortage of parkland in that precinct, I know councillor Davis knows there's a shortage of parkland in that precinct, and reasonable people can disagree and debate about exactly how much parkland needs to be secured. I presume that the theory behind this precinct plan is that some of the site will be secured for parkland and some will be allowed to develop, and really it comes down to a balance in act of how much gets developed as housing and how much is preserved as parkland. My view, given that the area is extremely vulnerable to flooding, is that very little, if any, of the site should be developed as housing, because adding more residents onto that floodplain and introducing them into a high-risk area is, in my view, negligent, and adds a lot to costs to the administration down the line. I think before insurance payers, it was something like 600, what was it, 660 million dollars cleaning up from the last flood? I can't remember the exact price. It was a huge figure, right? And the more people we settle down on the floodplain, the higher those costs become with future floods. But putting all that aside for a moment, the other reason I'm so frustrated with the administration about this decision is how fiscally irresponsible it is, how short-sighted it is from a financial planning perspective. Because what the Mayor has done by coming out and announcing that you want to rezone this land for high-density development, is that you have put upward pressure on the land values, you put upward pressure on the property values of the very land that you're trying to, or you're hoping to acquire part of for public parkland. It seems phenomenally stupid to me, and I would be genuinely interested in explanation from councillor Adams, as to why you don't buy the land first before making these announcements. It's a serious question, and maybe there's a good reason. Why don't you buy the land before you tell the market that you're going to rezone it for 90-story development?
Why has jobs since last evening?
Look, look.
Councillor.
I take the interjection, but I don't think it is corruption to buy land for public parkland. I don't think it is to say, we're going to buy this site for public parkland, and if five years later you decide to rezone it, then that's another conversation. But it seems that what you're doing here is handing value to the private owners who currently own these sites, and to my mind, that is corruption. Because you are saying to whoever happens to own the Parmalat site and the glass factory site and the Hanson Concrete site, here you go, guys, here's millions of dollars of additional real estate value. You don't actually have to build anything, you don't have to create any housing or whatever, we're just going to give you a gift of millions and millions of dollars of additional property value. And apparently, that's legal under the current system, but I think it ought to be considered corruption, because you are just gifting real estate value to the private sector without securing anything in return as a benefit to the public. You're just handing the money, free money. They don't have to build anything. And I don't think enough councillors in this chamber have reflected deeply enough on how damaging this is to the long-term goal of providing satisfactory infrastructure in these areas, because you're handing over millions and millions of dollars in additional real estate value. You know that the infrastructure charges, that the state government caps are not going to be high enough to give you enough revenue down the track to actually pay for the essential infrastructure for these areas. You're going to have to make all sorts of weird, awkward deals with private developers to secure certain parcels of land as public parkland and for other community facilities. It just doesn't make sense to me why you wouldn't just acquire the land first before you make zoning changes that dramatically increase its value. Other councils and other jurisdictions do that, and there doesn't seem to me to be any major concern about that from an ethical or legal perspective. But what I do think is unethical is gifting millions and millions of dollars of real estate value to a few property speculators. We all know that Parmalat's not really a milk factory, it's a property investment organisation that dabbles in milk on the side. That's how...
Point of order. Point of order to you.
Point of order, Chair. Chair, through you, Chair, just ask councillor Sri to reflect on the language that he's using in using the C-word, the word corruption, in describing, you know, what we've done with the upzoning, or the proposed upzoning in Kerillpa. That, I understand that he's qualified in terms of his understanding of it, but, you know, it's quite a specific word, it means things, it means things to lawyers, it means things to people, it means things to authorities that regulate council.
This is a very long point of order.
Councillor Murphy, you're now debating the point of order.
Ask him to consider withdrawing that.
Councillor Sri Ranganathan, you've...
Thanks, Chair.
...the issues that are being raised here, and I ask you to reflect on these sort of words.
I will qualify my commentary, because I can see that I've hurt councillor Murphy's feelings, and I'm sorry for that. And I do want to be clear that I'm not asserting that there has been anything that would be defined under the current legislation as legal corruption. I'm happy to withdraw that inference or implication. I'm not saying that anyone has broken the law here, I'm saying that the laws themselves allow something which I consider to be a corruption of the public interest and the way we should be planning and developing our city. The, I'm not disputing it, like, the law allows council to do this, but I think we should call it and consider it corrupt behaviour to hand millions of dollars to private companies who aren't contributing their fashion.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. So, well, we'll have to ask him to withdraw, whether he thinks it or not, he cannot say that our behaviour is corrupt, that it's impugning motive, and it's no...
I didn't say that. I'm saying I think it ought to be considered corruption, and that is an important distinction. No, that's exactly what I said, councillor Adams, and I... I think the problem here is that you're only half listening to what I'm saying and half doing other things.
Councillor, I'll rule on that.
Sure.
Councillor Sri Ranganathan, I've been listening carefully. I appreciate what you're saying about your belief about the use of the word corruption in this circumstance. But you're also suggesting that there's large amounts of money that are being quote-unquote handed to developers. And I think that's where you're getting too close to the wind.
Well, thank you Chair. But it is correct to say that millions of dollars of value has been given to these private landowners. That is a matter of fact and common sense. I'm not saying money has changed hands. I'm saying that zoning changes and even the mayor's public announcements of impending zoning changes will have inflationary impact on the land values of these sites in the Kerillpa Peninsula. That's a matter of fact. We don't have to debate the semantics of that. The council's decisions and its public statements are putting upward pressure on property values and land values, which will directly benefit whoever happens to own those blocks of land at the time that these announcements and decisions are made. It is poor planning. It's bad financial management. And it completely contradicts the will of the local community. And I don't just mean the people who happen to live down the road. I mean residents across Brisbane who can see that this is a poor deal for the future of the city. Because what residents want is more public parkland to extend South Bank all the way around that riverfront and to protect future residents from being housed in areas that are highly vulnerable to flooding. I've talked at length before about the schooling capacity issues as well in this precinct. I don't need to go into that again. But there are so many urban planning arguments against allowing 90-storey high-rises on this site. And it really frustrates me that we have such a narrow-minded administration with a single-track strategy for responding to the housing crisis. And on that note, I want to highlight that while the deputy mayor and the mayor might be feeling like they've done a good thing here or that they're about to do a good thing by rezoning these sites, rezoning them doesn't magically create more housing. It doesn't suddenly get people off the street. It certainly isn't what I'd call an emergency response. And I think it's a little bit silly to try to justify doing this as a TLPI. It's not the appropriate subject matter for a TLPI. Because you can rezone these sites for 90-storey development. That doesn't mean they're suddenly going to redevelop. In fact, it probably means that the types of development that eventually happen on there will be slower and costlier and more complicated. Because rather than building smaller high-density developments, they're going to spend three, four, five years trying to design and construct some massive monolith that's certainly a tribute to certain developers' egos, but doesn't materially improve housing affordability for people on low incomes. The reality is that we already have dozens of sites around the inner city. And I don't use dozens hyperbolically. There are literally dozens of sites around the city that are empty blocks of land or old warehouses on dry ground, on high land, that are already zoned for 20 and 30-storey development. And they're not being developed. Why? Because developers are just waiting for land values to rise. They're just sitting there waiting because they know that in a few years it'll become more profitable to develop. They're waiting for construction costs to decrease. They're waiting for property prices to rise further. The point is, you can rezone land for high-density development, but that does not immediately create housing. What you should be doing at the very least is that if you are rezoning land for high-density development, you lock in commitments for genuine public housing. Not any of this for-profit build-to-rent stuff where developers just jack up the rent down the track. Give us actual public housing. That's something that I would be excited about and that's something that my community would support. We need genuine public housing, not larges for the private property industry.
Further speakers?
Councillor Adams. Thank you, Mr Chair. I did want to reinforce the points that councillor Adams made earlier. It is an area that is ideally placed to provide additional housing in the city. It's a location that's well serviced by public transport and accessibility to the city. But I think it's important to note that this isn't just about housing. It's about creating great communities. It's about creating jobs, about creating great public realm, great amenity for the people who live there. So I think, you know, there's more to this than a housing story. Obviously, housing's a key element of it, but there's a lot more to it.
Point of order to you councillor Sri Ranganathan.
I really appreciate it. Would councillor Allen take a quick question?
No.
No?
Yeah, but I did want to unpack some of the points that councillor Sri made, sort of this, sorry, the points that councillor Sri Ranganathan made. The reality is that we have limited mechanisms under the Planning Act to charge developers. We have a mechanism through infrastructure charging to charge developers for developments, in which case we obviously then get revenue to support infrastructure purchases. However, that infrastructure charging mechanism is currently capped. I'd also note that the state government has a value uplift mechanism that they can use within their PDA areas that we don't enjoy. Councillor Adams and I were part of a regional planning committee meeting last week where the mayors in South East Queensland did push and continue to push for a better infrastructure charging framework that allows us to raise revenue to better reflect the cost of what it takes to provide the infrastructure. So I think that this sort of notion that we should be wading in and buying property, as before we've actually made a market announcement, that sits pretty uncomfortably with me. I think there would be some legal ramifications in doing so. The other thing that I would also point out is that-
What is it councillor Sri Ranganathan?
I really want to understand this more. So would councillor Allen please take a question?
No, I won't. No.
Councillor Adams?
The reality is that, you know, I'd agree with councillor Sri Ranganathan that rezoning of its own doesn't create housing. But, you know, what our role is to provide latent housing, to provide the opportunity through city plan, our development approval process, to provide latent housing, it's then up to other sectors of the market to build. We're not a builder. We're not a developer. We don't want to be. And ultimately, we need to do what we can to encourage the market to respond. But there are so many other variables at play here that we have no control over. And councillor Sri Ranganathan would be well aware of that. You know, the point that he made about providing public housing, council is not active in that space. It's a state government responsibility. We've given them a terrific opportunity here to acquire sites and build social housing and we would encourage them to have a look at it. What we are hoping to see in this area is not only more housing, but a good range of housing in terms of affordability. And if some of that is social housing, that would be a great outcome too. So I think that in this particular case, the market intervention role that councillor Sri Ranganathan expects council play is not appropriate. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further debate? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And thank you councillors for your contributions. It's nice for somebody to speak about my committee for a change. Look, I just want to make a few things clear. And I have to say, with the greatest respect, councillor Sri Ranganathan, I absolutely disagree with you that you think it's suitable for us to buy land and then rezone it. That is insider trading and is absolutely, totally unethical. I do not see that as being acceptable whatsoever, whatsoever. I'm not sure if other councillors do that either, because I do not believe that is something that would be upheld by the state government. It's something that would be suitable under the Local Government's Act. So this is about open and transparent planning so that people know exactly what is expected in the future. And if you happen to own land down there, you happen to own land down there. There's nobody that's going to be more or less that we're helping or less helping in there. This is the fact that it is less than 500 metres from the CBD. And of course, it was always going to be an area that was going to be very important for the future. Let's remember that these factories, the Parmalat, the Visi, the Lactalis, Hanson site, they've been there for over 100 years. That's when that was the outer skirts of the city. And the time has changed. The times have changed. But I just need to explain a little bit about the neighbourhood planning process that I know councillor Allen's been doing over the last couple of years. To remind you that city heights type, CBD-type heights for residential in South Brisbane does not mean that every single site is going to have 90 stories. Just like in the CBD, every single site does not have 274 metres. It depends on the size of the land. It depends on the neighbours. It depends on the edge of the precinct, which is why this precinct planning map is the investigation area. And I'll say that again, this is the investigation area. That means we are now going through the neighbourhood planning process, which means we go out to the community. We talk to them about what they want to see, how it works through this precinct. We have been there through the inner spark-
Point of order to you councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Well, councillor Adams, take a quick question about whether there's a TLPI proposed for the site?
Will you take a question Deputy?
I'll answer that question. At the moment, we're going through the process of how this will best be managed.
I didn't get to ask the question, but-
Oh, you-
Sorry, I guess I just wanted to clarify, are you proposing that there will be a temporary local planning instrument before the neighbourhood plan comes forward for debate?
Will you take a question?
At this point in time, we're looking at the process to best manage this. Because exactly as councillor Sri Ranganathan recognised, people are keen to get going. Development services are dealing with many, many applications now as we speak. And we do want to see the opportunities not be missed. But we are still looking through that process on how that may or may not work as well. But let me make it clear, with the neighbourhood plan at the moment, there is existing, there is existing zonings and uses that are consistent with what we expect to see going forward in this area as well. Mixed use, high-density residential principal centres, maximum building heights depending on site size and amalgamations. Structure planning, and yes, we do recognise that there is some indoor sports centre that's not developed down there. I have to argue a little bit on the parkland and open space. It's got lots down there. I mean, for some reason councillor Sri Ranganathan doesn't count South Bank as open space. However, it has been identified for new parks on the Lactalis site, on the Visi site. And that's over one point, that's a hectare on the Lactalis site and 3,000 square metres on Visi. Now, we were buying Visi, but the state government ended up buying it. We have always said from the get-go, South Bank 2.0. Very, very clear. And we do need principal indoor sports centres in this area as well. So there is opportunities there. At the moment, it's identified for the International Media Centre for the Olympics. But what happens to that site after that is what we need to look at in the years coming. So there will be, and we have done a lot of consultation in this space with our inner spark, as I have seen and everybody has heard, hopefully, nearly 700,000 impressions of people telling us what they'd like to see in the inner city, in our areas. The big book of ideas, some of the out there and some of the far more reasonable ideas of how this could be delivered. And this is the first step into actually delivering on the sustainable growth of our city and recognising that 500 metres from the CBD is the absolute right place to put higher density. We need to go up, not out. We want to protect our green spaces, protect our open spaces in the suburbs and go up where we see the infrastructure and the public and active transport. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Landers. Please ring the bells. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thanks Billy Closevast. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and one against.
Clear. That motion carried. Councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Second it.
Then we have a motion moved for an afternoon tea break. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you councillors. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report please.
As you please Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of March 2023 be adopted.
Second it. Thank you. It is moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14 March 2023 be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Mr Chair, order-
Mr Chairman, is there a quorum? Yes, there is. Thank you.
Mr Chair, in the Transport Committee last week, councillors, councillors received an update on the flood recovery at the Kedram Brook Bike Way. As the chamber is well aware by now, our active transport network was highly damaged across Brisbane during the six-day period of rain in February 2022. In fact, the Kedram Brook catchment was inundated to more than, more than 1,000 millimetres of rain during the worst natural disaster that this city has had in living memory. The task to repair and rebuild has been very significant. We've had more than 55 off-road bikeways and shared paths in Brisbane that were affected. And over 170 kilometres across the bikeways and shared paths, which we had to clear of debris, had to clean and undertake minor works to reopen them on the 1st of April 2022 ahead of the school holidays. Seven bikeway reconstruction projects were initiated to repair and replace a total loss of infrastructure, five of which were in and around Kedram Brook. The bikeway covers almost 20 kilometres of off-road shared pathways and separated bikeways and an incredible amount of more than 3,000 cubic metres of sediment were removed from the bikeway. The Kedram Brook Bike Way is an important active transport connection in our network and it benefits residents all the way from Mitchelson to Nunndah. Almost 600,000 people every year use the path. And that's why, Mr Chair, we do not want to just restore the bikeway, but to improve it, to make sure it withstands any future events better than before. We've increased embankment resilience by regenerating the landscape. We've used more riparian planting to increase ecological value. In fact, there are 17,000 new ground cover plants that we have added in the Kedram Brook ecosystem since we began flood recovery works. Three of the five sites that are affected at Kedram Brook Bike Way were fully restored by October last year. And where possible, we made sure that we delivered improved resilience at these sites. At Royal Parade in Alderley, damage included, the damage included the crossing bridge being buried by sediment. There was the creek completely realigned, pathway was destroyed and an extreme loss of vegetation. Council's response consisted of allowing the waterway to naturally realign itself and then to reinstate the existing path and make minor bridge repair works. The bikeway was reconnected at this location and opened to the public in June last year. At Kalenga Park in Clayfield, in your ward, Mr Chair, the rail underpass and culvert crossing sustained significant damage to its foundations and the concrete path and bikeway were also impacted. A D2 was put in place from February 2022 for the opening of the restored sections allowing access to riders in the northern catchment. Both rail underpass and culvert were fully restored and opened for public access in mid-2022. Then the crossing at Walter Burke Park in Gordon Park suffered extensive damage to the pathway, handrails and surrounding area, which connects the off-leash dog park to that location. Our teams repaired the handrail and reinstated the pathway and the dog park. And where possible, these works used a lot of recycled material. Of course, our biggest challenges at Kedram Brook were the crossing sections at Uxbridge Street and Wolverhampton Street. At these two sites, the structures were completely washed away and there was a lot of embankment, erosion and an extreme loss of vegetation. Many residents will have seen the pictures of scoured-out, destroyed bikeways that were broadcast around Australia during the flood event. These two sites, the structures, as I said, were completely washed away. Mr Chair, we have not only restored the bikeway as it was, but we have been improving the, improving the structures and making it more resilient. This will help rehabilitate the brook and make the bikeway more resistant in the event of a future flood. So talking about Uxbridge Street in Grange, we have installed now a temporary path to allow users to ride and walk through the area. We have engaged a multidisciplinary team to improve the site through waterway enhancements. We've allowed more room for the brook to take its natural path. This has included construction of an alternate alignment so that the path will sit higher on the bank and allowing for improved flood resilience and improving the stability of the embankment. The conclusion of this section's betterment project is scheduled in the coming weeks. And I'm sure, I'm sure councillor Hammond's residents will be very, very excited about that one. Final chair at Wolverhampton Street in Stafford, we have, we had at that point in the alignment of Kedram Brook, a whole active transport bridge which was washed away due to the sheer volume and force of the water during the flood. Full betterment of this section commenced in November last year and is on track for completion in mid-2024. At this location, existing path grades, significant stormwater infrastructure and DDA compliance makes this a very challenging job. And betterment includes a higher alignment of the bridge than the previous structure. So this bridge will be much higher out of the brook and much longer in order to- so this bridge will be much higher out of the brook and much longer in order to, to deal with that ramping. But what we will get is a reduced frequency of inundation and a much reduced sediment deposition on pathways during an event. This will not only protect the brook itself, but also council's infrastructure and the investment that we are making in that community from having to be rebuilt ever again. This is great news, Mr Chair. The great news is that council reopened Wolverhampton Street with our temporary connection on the 17th of February this year, and I believe residents are using it and enjoying it to a great degree, where that now allows all users to use the full extent of Kedram Brook Bike Way once again. Finally, councillors and the committee were also updated regarding the impacts that floodwaters had on bikeway lighting. Plan improvements on lighting along Kedram Brook Bike Way are now underway and are expected to be completed by mid 2023. The damage of, the damage to this valuable piece of community infrastructure, of course, was very significant, but the outcomes of this administration's flood recovery programme are to build a better and more resilient Kedram Brook for everyone riding and walking in the area. Council's been working very hard since February last year to restore our city's assets and where possible, to make them more resilient, and we are extremely proud of all of the work all the council officers have been undertaking on this task force. And I just want to reiterate, Chair, that this has been a multidisciplinary team, many different disciplines across council engaged on this very important project, and I want to just commend them all on the progress that they've made in the last 12 months, and we look forward in the next, in the next 12 months to be wrapping up all that work and completing betterment in the brook. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, I rise to speak on the Transport Committee report. The report is actually titled Flood Recovery Update Transport. So here's me, not on this committee, not allowed to be on this committee, here's me thinking, oh great, we're going to get an update about flood recovery for transport assets around the city. No, that is not what this report's about. This report is about the pork barreling that's been going on in and around Kedram Brook. And I say this because it is very clear to me that the LNP administration is prepared to spend hundreds of millions of dollars, I suspect all of this is cost, to repair major damage through Kedram Brook, and we know that that was significant, I have seen that damage, and I don't have a problem with that money being spent by Brisbane City Council. It's been spent upfront by Brisbane City Council, it's been spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we've just heard councillor Murphy outline, they're making it better than it was before, bigger and better. Yet councillor Murphy has voted against repairs to a, the only park that remains closed in Brisbane, at Cactablastus Corner. In that, in my ward, the LNP administration, including councillor Murphy, couldn't be bothered to invest any money in repairs over there. They're not going to invest any money until they've got the state government's approval, that's the answer councillor Wines gave just a few weeks ago. So I think what this shows is the hypocrisy of the LNP, the fact that they're prepared to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in their own ward, and they're not prepared to invest in wards that they don't have a sitting member in. That is a breach of their ethical obligations under the City of Brisbane Act. They are supposed to make decisions that are in the best interest of the whole city, but it's pretty clear that this LNP administration is only governing for themselves, not the whole city.
Further debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise very, very briefly, and will be making sure the residents along the Kedram Brook know that councillor Johnson did not want the busiest bikeway in Brisbane to be, to be fixed. I remember on the Saturday, sorry, Monday.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
God. I think she called it pork barreling on the, the north side, I think is that's what she exactly said, and it should be spent on a park in her area. Now, this is one of the busiest bikeways.
Point of order to you, councillor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Times two.
Now, this is one of the busiest bikeways in the, in the city, and very popular, and goes basically from councillor, councillor Davis' ward, councillor Wines' ward, my ward, touches on councillor Adam, and I think it also touches on councillor McLaughlin's ward as well. So it is extremely busy, but on that Sunday morning after the floods hit, I remember going down there and literally crying at the devastation that was down there on the Kedram Brook. How the embankment slipped, the bikeways had totally disappeared, bridges had disappeared, it was a sight for very sore eyes. I know the residents on the north side are very happy that the bikeway is now up and running, and they can go back and be fit, healthy and active. One of the things councillor Murphy that he didn't allude to was the fact that there was a stop work order from Derm for approximately four months, sorry, four weeks, or four to six weeks on the project, and this was due to the tusk frogs, an endangered frog that was breeding at the time. I had to actually tell my residents, please don't kill them, they're not toads, they are actually an endangered frog that looked like a baby toad with fangs. We also had some endangered bird species that were nesting at the time as well. When I go down and have a look at the, the brook, especially behind Stafford City there at, just at the end of Royal Parade, how they had approximately six metres of sand go over that bridge, it looked like a desert. The work that the council officers have done there is absolutely incredible and has sustained the last lot of flood events that we have had down there. When I go down, it's great to see the smiling faces, especially of little kids, that's where my kids learnt how to ride their bikes, riding their bikes along the Kedram Brook with their families, the walkers, the more professional cyclists are all using this vital part, vital infrastructure on the north side. So I want to thank the officers on the record for all their hard work and their continuous hard work along our beautiful Kedram Brook.
Councillor Johnston.
Hi, yes, councillor Hammond made two just completely false statements about my earlier speech. Firstly, she said that I had said that I didn't want Kedram Brook fixed, I mean, that's completely not the case. I said that I did support funding for Kedram Brook. And then, secondly, she stated that I said the money should instead be spent in Sherwood on Cactablastus Corner, that's not what I said. I said that it is not reasonable that councillors spending the money in their own areas and not spending money in Tennyson Ward, and that they have an obligation to the whole city to fix flood recovery and fix flood-damaged assets.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy? No further speakers, we now put this report to the vote. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of March 2023 be adopted.
Second it. Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14 March 2023 be adopted. Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Can I thank all those people who are so enthusiastic to second the report because it is an excellent report, and it's one that people would want to be associated with, so thank you to everybody. But can I just tidy up and finish off some things, some points I was making earlier today? There is a universal view in the western suburbs that something must be done about the Kenmore Roundabout. Now, when the, the Labor-Green government withdrew the funds with the support of the local federal MP, they set that community back a long time. It is unlikely now with those two parties in control of the federal and state parliaments whether this would get any meaningful attention anytime soon. But I just want to say, rather than going back to the drawing board or investing the funds in a meaningful upgrade for the Kenmore Roundabout, the Labor, Greens, state and federal governments ripped $25 million out of that community. With Labor's unwillingness to spend money on that part of Brisbane, and with a brand-new Greens MP supporting the removal of these vital safety upgrades, it really shouldn't come as a shock to anybody. And instead of fighting to keep those $25 million in the community, that MP, Mrs Watson-Brown, supported their removal by saying it was a positive step under the state government has withdrawn funding from the Kenmore Roundabout upgrade. No one should be surprised because there's nothing more that the Greens hate than for normal people to go about their normal lives in a safe and efficient, comfortable way. And that is, and one way we do that is by upgrading our roads. So I call on that federal MP to change her mind about this project and return and support it.
Point of order, Chair? Point of order to you, councillors, Sri Ranganathan.
I wonder if councillor Wines would take a question about, has he met with the MP in question?
No, councillor.
Have you met with her?
So as I say, I call on the federal government to maintain their funding commitment, and I call on the state to return the funds that they withdrew from that area. It is a necessary project, as I say, the community has a very single view that something must be done. Can I also take a moment to reflect again on the North West Transport Network study? Now, I read with interest last week in the Brisbane Times, where noted journalist Tony Moore has, has submitted an article for our consideration on that particular outlet, which speaks to the little-known plan to fix congestion in Brisbane's busy north. Now, the little-known plan he's referring to is actually the state government's multimodal North Brisbane sequencing plan. Did anyone else know, apart from you and I, Mr Chair, that such a thing existed? It is unlikely, it is unlikely. There's a few things that stand out for me from this article. Councillors may recall that the Minister for Transport felt that it was humiliating to spend $10 million on a transport study. He has announced here that he'll be submitting $20 million on his transport sequencing plan. So I suppose the minister reflected that he saw our humiliation and thought he'd like twice as much, and, and has gone for.
Double or nothing.
Double or nothing on the North Brisbane-Morton Bay transport sequencing plan. Now, this article speaks in a lot of ways to some really interesting points, because it says, the minister's quoted here by saying that he doesn't, I'll, I'll read it directly, it's a direct quote, "I don't have a clear view of what should go there or when", in reference to the North West Transport Corridor, which is interesting, so let's just reflect on that again. "I don't have a clear view of what should go in there or when." But on the 8th of March, he said, clearly, there's that word again, clearly, there needs to be a rail solution through there. So he does have a pretty clear idea of what should go through there. Here, we see he doesn't have a clear idea, yet in the radio, that same, only two weeks earlier, he was clearly advocating for a rail solution. But that, it is actually fascinating, but I'll tell you what the most fascinating thing is. The article speaks here, I'll quote from the article, "In March, Bailey said", that's the minister, "said the government had no plan to demolish homes along the corridor for a surface rail line, but did not answer questions about what he intended to do." I'll just go over that again. He said the government had no plans to demolish homes, and one must reflect the careful use of language to say that he does intend to demolish bushland. There is no other way that, had he intended to save the bushland, he would have said so in this article. And the fact is that he is, he's arguing about homes and not bushland indicates that all of our suspicions about the North Brisbane, the North West Transport Corridor and the state plan, the state government's plan for it are increasingly correct. And I must concede, when the pieces were falling into place, I thought, no, 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 no. The state government cannot, in all seriousness, want to put a heavy rail line through that pe, that part of the world. That made no sense. But, but as each piece of the puzzle lands in place, it increasingly looks as though that is in fact their plan. And I once again call on them to not demolish the bushland, there are alternative options. Our work includes subterranean options for rail and subterranean options for motor vehicles, and then work through the, through Gimpie Road for bus rapid transport and potentially metro. I strongly encourage them to take our work and treat it seriously. To the report, last week, we had a discussion about whether Ashington Street West End was worthy of a, of increased traffic calming. I took, undertook at that meeting that the report, the traffic report would be submitted, that is, the traffic report that shows, as I said, a high level of compliance. There is a total vehicles on the street of 3,000, which would prompt your traffic calming, there is traffic calming in the street. The incidence of vehicles exceeding the speed limit was 44 in total, that's 44, that's less than one and a half percent, exceeding the posted speed limit of 40 kilometres an hour. So that is, that is available, I will submit that for table and as I agreed to last week. We had a discussion in committee regarding vulnerable road user speed limit programmes, which spoke to two sects, two separate sections of the city, one around Newstead and one around the hospital precinct of South Brisbane. And they, and it was how we dealt with high pedestrian use areas, in particular where there are potentially vulnerable people, such as the hospital. I trust that the councillors who wish to make contributions have read the report, and I look forward to their contributions, and there will be no petitions this week.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Yeah, just real quickly to place on my record, my thanks to the officers for their great work around the hospital precinct. I think it was really good that we finally got those speed limits lowered a little bit. As always, it takes a lot longer than I think it needs to, and I acknowledge that part of that is a problem, the way the state government processes are set up. I remain of the view that the hospital zone should still be extended further down Annalee Road, it currently kind of stops around that Stanley Street corner, and in fact, there's still hospital facilities and lots of patients all the way along Annalee Road as far as my office. So through you, Chair, to councillor Wines, I do think there will be further work to do in that precinct to extend the current hospital zone, and I hope you'll give some consideration to that in due course. I, of course, also think the hospital zone speed limit should drop to 30 kilometres an hour rather than the current 40, but I'll save that debate for another day. Thanks again to the officers for working constructively with me on that one.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Wines? No further debate? Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of March 2023 be adopted.
Second it.
Thank you, it has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 14 March 2023 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just moving to the committee presentation, it was a preview on the upcoming 2023 Botanica. This free event is held across 10 days from the 12th to the 21st of May within the city Botanic Gardens. We will see 10 large-scale installations ranging from sculpture and projections through to augmented reality and interactive creations that will once again transform the gardens into an outdoor gallery. Botanica was the first delivery under council's Brisbane River Art Framework in 2018 as part of the cultural programme for the Gold Coast Commonwealth Games. The year-on-year diversity and talent of selected artists sees Botanica as a continued success, attracting more than 200,000 visitors since the event started. In 2021, Botanica attracted an impressive 75,000 visitors with the inclusion of a variety of food and beverage options and a children's trail sticker book. And while 2022 was impacted by wet weather, the event still saw 17,000 visitors attend the first dry evening. Botanica aims to provide visitors with experiences that promote social connection and inclusion, creative participation and sensory involvement with the city and gardens. This year's programme focuses on sustainability, and the artists have responded to the 2023, 2023 theme, Tread Softly, which allows reflection on our natural environments and will help shape ideas for our future direction. In addition to the talented local and national artists, including Phoebe Paradise, Theatre of Thunder and Keemon Williams, this year's exhibition also features the first international artist, Noah Hame. With the addition of our first-ever visiting international artist, we are confident that Botanica will continue to cement itself as a mainstay of the Australian contemporary arts community. Residents can also look forward to after-dark art walks, night explorer children's tours and discovery trails, as well as performances each evening. Also on offer are interactive artworks, food trucks and an outdoor bar that residents and visitors can enjoy. Free and fun for all ages, Botanica 2023 is another way the Shuna Council is providing more to see and do in Brisbane, and I'd certainly encourage councillors, if they get the opportunity to attend Botanica this year, as I mentioned, 12th to the 21st of May. Item B was a petition containing 172 signatures requesting council ensure the proposed townhouse development at 44 Wooloween Avenue, Wooloween complies with the city plan. On the 19th of September 2022, an application was lodged for the reconfiguration of lots, two into two lots. The existing pre-1947 dwelling is proposed to be re. The existing pre-1947 dwelling is proposed to be retained on the front lot, with a dual occupancy proposed to be constructed on the rear lot. The development application is subject to code assessment, and therefore, public notification is not required. More than 170 submissions have been received to date. The matters raised by all submitters, including in this petition, will be considered by council officers as part of the assessment process. I can advise the chamber, the application is still under assessment by council's Development Services team against the requirements of city plan and in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act 2016. Should the petitioners wish to view a copy of the development application, including any additional information submitted online, they are able to access these documents via council's Development I website. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. Move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting, 14 March, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 40 March, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week's committee presentation was an update on our scooter track initiative. The Shrima Council is building on the popularity and success of our award-winning scooter track at Bradbury Park. The presentation provided an overview of the new installations at Paul Conti Park, Shaftree Street Park, Kathleen Street Park, and Watonga Park. The new scooter tracks are a fantastic addition to these parks, providing safe and engaging spaces for scooter enthusiasts of all ages to practise their skills and enjoy their hobby. The tracks have been designed with supporting riding and character features that add an extra level of excitement and fun for the experience. For example, Paul Conti Park scooter track features a dry creek bed with nature play elements, a scooter ferry, bridge, and animal sculptures. The park also boasts a shaded island-themed playground with a beach hut, double-swing mini-theater, slide, and fishing rod. Shaftree Street Park scooter track, on the other hand, features moguls, a tunnel, and texture panels, making it perfect for those looking for a more challenging and exciting experience. The park also boasts a picnic shelter where families and friends can gather to enjoy a meal or a snack while watching the scooter enthusiast zoom by. Scooter Track Initiative is just another example of the Shrima Council's commitment to enhancing and maintaining Brisbane's park and providing more to see and do for all people to enjoy. Mr. Chair, item B is the formal naming of a section of Parkview Place at 70 Darian Street, Bridgeman Downs, as Llewellyn Place. Llewellyn Place is named in recognition of the community contributions of the late Drew and Tracy Llewellyn. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to speak to this item today because I had the very great privilege of knowing this amazing couple. I met Drew and Tracy over 25 years ago when our children attended Aspli State Preschool, and then later at St Paul's School at Bald Hills. Drew and Tracy called Bridgeman Downs home for more than two decades. It's where they raised their three children, Jessica, Sam, and Alice. On Sunday, granddaughter Matilda was christened. And whilst Tracy and Drew did not get to meet their beautiful granddaughter, I know that Matilda will hear many stories about their wonderful and loving grandparents and what they meant to so many people. Drew and Tracy were highly active in the local community and a familiar sight around the local area. They were always the first to put their hands up to help out, whether it was through regular volunteering at the two schools, participating in community events, or Drew timekeeping each Friday at Aspli Swimming Club while Tracy helped out in the canteen. Drew and Tracy were heavily involved with the Northern Suburbs Pony Club, where Tracy served as the secretary for several years, and Drew volunteered actively as an organizer of the working bees. The family dedicated an extraordinary amount of time to the club, and you would often see them down there in the paddock with the horses. Their horse, April, was well-known in the local area and brought so much joy to the community, particularly the children. So popular was April that April Crescent in Bridgeman Downs was named in her honor. Now, I didn't see it, so it could be an urban myth, but April may have enjoyed a bit of grazing in the area in the park where Llewellyn Place is proposed to be played. Mr. Chair, Drew was an award-winning cameraman in my former role. I would see him around Parliament House from time to time. When he passed away, it was clear how positively he impacted people's lives. At his funeral, there was standing room only with family and hundreds of friends and media colleagues packing the very large auditorium at Bridgeman Baptist Church. Tracy was the friendly face of the local bakery in Bridgeman Downs. Customers were always welcomed like they were long-lost friends. She was very creative, and her birthday cakes were locally renowned. Tracy sewed hundreds of masks during the pandemic and delivered them to local medical centres and the local hospital for doctors and for nurses. She also sold masks at the bakery to raise funds for cancer research. But even as she quietly battled cancer, she still delivered bakery goods to people who could not drive. Tracy saw her battle with cancer as a very private matter, and it was a shock to so many of us when she passed away. I've only touched on the surface of the contribution of Drew and Tracy Llewellyn in our community. It was always family and community first for these two upstanding people, and I wholeheartedly support the naming of Llewellyn Place. Mr. Chair, items C, D, and E were petitions requesting park namings in Lotter, Milton, and Coopuru respectively, and they were all supported, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Councillor Cumming.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, item C is a request to council rename Bill Lammon Park at Lotter Don Randall Park, and I'm supportive of this proposal. I doubt if I'll get it finished while I'm still the councillor, but my replacement, who'll be a woman, will be in a position to finalise it. I think it's, there's a background of this which I won't go into, but currently, Bill Lammon Park takes up most of the park in Andrew Street, Lotter, and Don Randall has actually got the soccer fields, which Bayside United leased, named after him. So the proposal is that Bill's name will be pulled off the whole of the parkland area. That'll be going to Don's name, and I suppose then there's a vacancy for someone to have their name on the soccer field area. And I'm very familiar with that club, having played there some years, and it's, there are some prominent club members, or one in particular I can think of, who was there from day one when the club broke away from the Winham Club, who would be an appropriate name for that park. But anyhow, we'll see what happens. But we'll go through the process and get it finalised as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak item A about the new scooter tracks. I wanted to take this moment to thank the Lord Mayor for the new scooter track in Paul Conti Park in Hemant. Now, if Labour for Brisbane took your mobile office 100 meters across the road, you would have seen how terrific this local park is. Actually, you would have had the opportunity to chat to some locals rather than your branch members and Brenda. Actually, we look forward to working with Brenda as the new councillor for Winter Manly Ward, but let's get back to our scooter tracks. Whilst this project was announced, I immediately started to think about all the additional play opportunities we could add on to this scooter track. So to find what the community wanted, we kicked off consultation with a park planning party to speak to residents, and I was very lucky to have the amazing Andrew Ensby from council join me to listen to residents. Andrew brought with him a sign that had different design elements on it, and residents could stick a sticker on to choose which play elements they wanted included. From the feedback we received, parents, guardians, and children really wanted to get into the fun as well with interactive play spaces. So we had the goal to create a really interactive playground, and Andrew did just that. The scooter track weaved around an island-themed playground, representing the islands just off the beautiful Brisbane coast. A bridge, a cafe, a theatre, a chess play area, and many more play elements for the community to enjoy. And yes, it was very expensive. Last October, we opened the park with a free pancake breakfast, and a shout-out to the lovely Anne-Marie and other volunteers from the Hemant Community Hall for cooking everyone breakfast. Thank you also to Project Distribution for coming down to host a scooter and skateboard workshop. The park was so busy that Ben had to take his scooter workshop over to a nearby footpath as you couldn't move. We literally had hundreds of kids enjoying the new scooter track. I also wanted to thank Little Matthew from across the road and Paul Conti's wife and children for opening the park with me. Matthew had the biggest smile ever seen when he helped me cut the ribbon. His mum came up to me after and said that was a huge milestone for Matthew, as he never speaks to anyone. So for him to come up to me to ask to open it was a really big thing. He has autism. Paul Conti Scooter Park has now been open for seven months, and every time I go down there with my girls, they absolutely love it. So thank you, Andrew, for seeing the community's vision and for making it come to life, and thank you, Lord Mayor, for funding this terrific park in Hemant.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I also rise to speak on item A today, the Shrima Council Scooter Park Initiative. Now, I'm going to give you a little bit of a background here around how the Watonga Park scooter track came about. I have to admit that initially, it was born of fear. It was born of fear for councillor Atwood witnessing me break my neck at Bradbury Park on the skateboard. And I do want to thank, I did well. I did well. The knees were a bit shoddy, but I got through it. But I do want to thank the officers and councillor Atwood for being there, just in case I did break my neck. It was a wonderful experience to go out and get some kind of idea of what these new scooter parks were going to be, and to even trial it. I'm not one to shy away from a little bit of adrenaline, but I have to admit the scooter parks now bringing that little adrenaline rush to the little ones. I also want to give my thanks to Andrew, because I know Andrew, when he first came into this, he wanted to see scooter parks around Brisbane be a little different, to have something different at each one, so they weren't the same. They had to bring in different elements, and I think with that vision, he has absolutely succeeded, especially in Watonga Park. Because poor old Andrew had the challenge of building some height into something that was completely flat. So we had the kids, they needed a bit of a runoff, and Andrew managed to build these beautiful mounds around a roundabout. We built in a centerline, so now the kids, for the first time in the gap, can actually ride around on the left side of the broken line. They've never been able to do it before. It's the first time we've introduced some road elements into our scooter parks, and I really want to thank Andrew for that. One thing that we did very, very successfully in the Watonga Park was bringing in Hear and Say. So we had this vision that we would theme it around butterflies. And as we all know, Hear and Say's emblem is a butterfly, which is the shape of the cochlea in the ear. So we actually put it out to the schools to design the butterflies that would go on the butterfly tunnel, and we did that very, very well. And Hear and Say got on board with it, reran with it, and now that tunnel is covered in large butterflies. And mind you, butterflies, if at some stage, we can change the artwork on them. So they're basically wrapped, and we can say to the kids, or we can go back to Hear and Say, we'd like to run another competition, can we change the butterflies and turn it up a little bit? I also want to thank Queensland Police, and specifically the police at the Gap Police Station, because I know our opening day, we decided to have a little bit of fun. So we had the cops come out there with the radar gun, and they were getting the kids, measuring how fast the kids were going down the little hill. It was a lot of fun. We also had Greg Elphinstone from Hear and Say, the CEO there, to cut the ribbon, and also some residents. I want to thank Emily from QPS, because I did put her on the spot, to cut the ribbon. She was a bit reluctant, but we sort of pushed her into it. She hung her in there between Greg and the Lord Mayor. But it was a wonderful, wonderful day. The park is absolutely getting smashed, which is what it was designed to do. It's now one of the most successful areas of play that we have in the Gap ward, so much so that the kids sort of abandoned the other play spaces in Watonga Park. But that's a problem, you know, it's a good problem to have. So I really want to thank, really want to thank Andrew again. I want to thank Greg Elphinstone from Hear and Say. I want to thank QPS for their assistance, and especially the Lord Mayor for the funding, and specifically councillor Atwood for making sure that I didn't actually break my neck. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item E. Since becoming councillor, one of the particularly rewarding parts of this job is getting to know people in your community and those who contribute to the sense of community that we have in our areas. One of the groups in particular that I want to acknowledge, and it is related today to the petition, is the Coopuru and District Heritage Group. I've been working with them closely to support and share local history with residents. As president of the group, Ron Baker organised the petition to generate support for a small park in Coopuru to be named Pat Clark Ryan Park. The land is bordered by Laid, Kenumbra, and Stoddart Streets. Ms. Patricia Clark Ryan was a resident of Coopuru for most of her life, contributing to the community via acts of service and involvement with many, many local organisations. Residents recall her efforts in cleaning up litter from the streets right across Coopuru. Sadly, she passed away in July 2019. The Coopuru and Districts Heritage Group organised a petition to have this small parcel of land named in her honour, and of course, I am pleased to support their suggestion.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Davis? No further speakers? Now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 14th of February, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 40 March, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had a presentation on the Downfall Creek Restoration Project, and I want to thank all the council officers that were involved in this very worthwhile project. It was in the Marchant Ward, just off the Carandale Shopping Centre, the Turnside Shopping Centre, my apologies. Sorry, wrong C. Yes, anyway, it was a worthwhile project, and it's just another example of us as the Shrima administration doing some really wonderful work in the environment too. And the amount of sediment that they took out that had been travelling down the creeks was pretty amazing. And there's also two petitions there that were held last week, and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Councillor Strung.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, before I commence my remarks on item B, could we ask that item A be taken serial item and B and C be taken together for voting?
Sure. Item A, serial item?
Yep.
And B and C for voting?
Yep. Well, thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on a petition that was a real grassroots petition, actually, that came from my constituents. It all started basically back, and a little bit of history here, it really started back in November before our rain bomb happened early the following year. And what was happening was that the grass in some of the parks and some of the road verges were getting extremely high, weren't being cut on their regular basis, which is outlined on our website as to how often parks and road verges are supposed to be mowed. Anyways, there was some precipitation that was happening, of course, which does sometimes interrupt this type of service, and that was fair enough, and my constituents were tolerating that. But it got to the point where, around about December, January, it was really, really bad, and it got to the point where some of our residents actually went out, especially over the Christmas break, and because they had relatives coming in, they wanted to use the parks, they went out and mowed it themselves, right? And with their own hand mowers. So groups would get together with two or three mowers, and there we go out. Now, that was, I thanked them very much, obviously, for that, but it was quite embarrassing that they actually had to do that. This is basic services here, the basics, the fundamentals of what councils should be doing. doing and we're not doing it. At least in this particular instance, it was done really, really badly. So what happened was that eventually, I mean, the rain bomb happened, of course, and that really did delay a lot of, a lot of that mowing, which was fair enough again. But once that cleared, cleared up and dried out and the sun came out, started growing again, it was clear that the contractor was not keeping up and another contractor was designated to help out and, and help out in those areas which the, the, that current contractor wasn't able to perform their duties. So, which again improved things to a certain extent. But it, again, it all sort of fell over again and the residents were really, really getting aggro, right? I was getting many, many calls to the ward office. We were trying to explain, we were trying to sympathise with their, with their plight. We were making calls, we were, we were booking the jobs to be looked at and, and some of those jobs were, were uptaken, but a lot of them weren't able to or weren't, didn't, didn't happen. So about later that, later that year, I had a number of residents saying, listen, we want to, we want this thing sorted out. I said, well, listen, how about we, we commence a petition, which they were happy to, happy to sign up and about four hundred and sixty people signed that e-petition and, and of course we, we then received and then we lodged, we lodged the petition. But what, what, the amazing thing is that it's taken twelve months for this petition to actually come back to us, right? Now, this is basic services again. I mean, it's not a complicated petition. Why would it take twelve months to come back? So the first draft came back and, you know, for comment and all the rest of it and I looked at it and it, it, you know, it was pretty, it was a pretty fair recommendation. I was happy to support that recommendation because it looked like council was trying to do thing, trying to do, the outcomes manager was right on to it. He was trying to work with contractors to be able to overcome the issues that we were having. So I was quite happy to, to support that. And then when the final recommendation came out this month, I had a look and I compared the two and there was clearly a difference in the amount of text that was actually on the two recommendations if you compare them. And some of it was just, you know, just a different way of interpreting or, or saying something, which cut down the amount of words. But then the one thing that really stuck out was that in the original one, council originally said that they would work with contract service providers to ensure the continuity of service would continue. And so that was in the first recommendation and when the second recommendation came out, it was missed, it was gone, wasn't there. And I'm thinking, why wouldn't you keep that in? Isn't this just the normal, basic stuff that you would do is to work with contractors to make sure that they provide the services they're contracted to do? Why would you take that out? So that's why I would not support, I did not support the recommendation that we're, that we're here in the chamber debating today, right? I just, I just want to say that it's, this is like really basic stuff, right? Printing the trees, cutting the grass, filling the potholes, all those basic services that people pay their rates for. And then if we got some money left, okay, let's build a green bridge or something that, something that everyone can benefit from as well, but, or should be able to benefit from. But we really got to focus on the basics that this council is actually, that is, is supposed to be doing for the rate payers of Brisbane. And in this particular instance, we have failed and I just hope that the Chair will, will take that on board. We really should reinstate that statement into the recommendation, I would think, because it's, it's an important statement and we should be doing that work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further debate? No further debate? councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to rise to speak to the comments made by the councillor for Forest Lake Ward through you, Mr. Chair. Look, it was, as you would suggest, I would say, a perfect storm of events and it was very unfortunate and unfortunately it's, some of these things are going to happen and it's going to happen in somebody's ward. And in this particular case, it happened to be the Forest Lake Ward. It's not something that we had a lot of control over at the time. You know, we, we hire and the contractors are local business people, hiring local residents. Unfortunately, as the councillor for Forest Lake did say, our situation did get out of control. We did work with the contractor to see if there was anything we could do to help. There was things that happened that I obviously can't mention in this place, but the things that I can talk about were, you know, the pandemic, they had staff shortages, they had people away sick, there was a whole lot of stuff going on. So yet, a perfect storm of events happening. They then came to us and said, you know, look, we, we just can't, we can't do it, which I think is a good thing because continuing for us as a council to pay someone who's not able to complete the work is not ideal for rate payers or an ideal outcome for councillors as well. So they came to us, said they were not, not able to complete their contract. So we then went to our other contractors on our procurement board to see if any of them were able to pick up this ward to do. Unfortunately, they were unable to as well because having gone through the February event with all the flooding and all the grass growing, as the councillor for Forest Lake said, you know, grass grows unfortunately. And it was literally growing before our eyes at that time. I don't know about you, Mr. Chair, but my husband was certainly mowing the lawns pretty much every week during that period of time. Our contractors don't have that capacity, they, they go onto a fortnightly schedule so the minute they finish, they start again. But as I said, at that point in time, grass was literally growing before our eyes. They did finally get in there, we managed to get a contractor who was able to come in and do it. I do note the comments that the councillor for Forest Lake's made about the petition response. Yes, words were, it was, it was, the, the comments and responses were reduced in length and words. I'm not a hundred percent sure because where it says council was working with the contractor, it says council worked with the contractor to improve the service continuity. They notified us that they were unable to meet the standard and then obviously immediately following the onboarding of replacement, you know, we, we had that event and, and things were thing. So look, all I can say is hopefully things have improved for the residents of Forest Lake as they, across the city, as my role of City Standards Chair. I take my role very, very seriously. Any councillor in the chamber knows that. If they've got problems in their area that they want to bring to my attention, I'm more than happy to hear from them and we will do whatever we can to work with residents and councillors to ensure that they are living in an area of a good city standard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now we move to the vote on these, on this report in Siri item, so item A. The vote first is for item A. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Items B and C together, items B and C together. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division? Division moved by councillor Strunk and councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. Eyes to the right, nose to the left. Thanks, Billy. Close the bars. Plaques, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and six against.
Thank you. Clear those items carried. councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of March, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, fourteen March, twenty twenty-three be adopted. councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just before turning to the committee presentation, we've had a few wonderful events this week. St Patrick's Day, of course, was celebrated last Friday and on Thursday night, a few brave people went along to the St Patrick's Eve dinner, which of course is always a, a great event and it was fantastic to see all of our facilities lit up green for St Patrick's Day and the Irish certainly know how to party, so that was a, a great event. On Saturday evening, we had Dance for Daniel and again, this is a, a fantastic organisation that does such amazing work with young people and out of a tragedy, it is fantastic to see the amazing work that has been done. It's twenty years since Daniel lost his life very tragically and it is a true, a true recognition to the Morecambe family that they continue to do the work that they do. And you can see when they speak just how committed they are to this day to making sure that no other child has to, to suffer as Daniel did. We also had a Walk to Remember the Compassionate Friends through New Farm Park on the weekend. I was joined by councillor Cunningham and we were able to talk to some of the parents who yet again have experienced the tragedy of losing a child or, or an adult, adult child. It was, again, it's always a very moving event and, but wonderful to have the piper play as they move through New Farm Park to just remember those that had been lost. There was also Dog Fest and I know councillor Davis had a fantastic time at Victoria Park. And again, what a great way to educate owners and to celebrate the many wonderful things about man's best friend. And I, I know that Victoria Park was, was a beautiful day, so I think everyone probably had a great time. Councillor Hammond was there too? Councillor Hammond, I think I saw a photo through you, Mr. Chair. I did see a photo of councillor Hammond with, with some, some of our four-legged friends and again, it is a great way to see Victoria Park being activated in, in such a way. I finally just want to remind everyone that there is still the tiniest chance for you to get along to Night Feast, which finishes on Sunday, the twenty-sixth of March. So on Saturday and Sunday, you can get there from two o'clock in the afternoon. They've extended the hours a little bit because this has been one of the most popular events in Brisbane. We're just absolutely delighted that so many people have got along to experience the wonderful event that the powerhouse have produced. Not only is it about food, but it's also about cultural experiences and again, a big thank you to the team at the powerhouse who have really worked so hard to, to make this event the success that it has been. So I encourage anyone, if you haven't had the opportunity to get along, it's there from Wednesday through to Sunday. Sunday is the last day, but it is a great opportunity to really have some tastes of Brisbane. Now, turning to the committee presentation, we had a committee presentation on the Brisbane Festival twenty twenty-three. The festival was held from the first to the nineteenth of February and continued with the twenty twenty-two theme of connection through culture. The festival provides paid employment to four hundred artists and two hundred and fifty arts workers and of course aligns with our Creative Brisbane Creative Economy Strategy. The festival commenced in twenty thirteen and has grown into a citywide event across Brisbane. Its launch was at the Fortitude Musical Hall and we had over six hundred attendees to that. I want to say a big thank you to, to the Garcia's for making this get better and better every year. It really is, Brisbane is really an event that just grows each year. It's wonderful to see cultures connecting and I really want to say a big thank you to everyone. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? Moved to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fourteenth of March, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, fourteen March, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Item A was the committee presentation on Brisbane's floral emblem and item B was a petition about Brisbane's floral emblem. So I'll speak on both items together. In nineteen thirty, the Horticultural Society of Queensland shortlisted their suggestions for a floral emblem, which then went to a public vote. It was down to the red poinsettia and the bogan villia in the end. The bogan villia received twelve hundred and seventy-five votes and the red poinsettia received twelve hundred and ninety-four votes. So it was neck and neck, but the poinsettia got over the line by just nineteen votes. In those days, they didn't have bunnings or large nurseries and the most popular plants and trees were ones which could be easily propagated from cuttings. The red poinsettia grows well in Brisbane and brings a splash of colour to winter gardens, but as we know, it's not a native species. It's in fact native to Mexico, not Brisbane. Thankfully, these days, we have a much greater appreciation for our beautiful native species and we agree with the residents who have contacted us over the years, including the petitioners in item B, that it is time to take another look at the matter. Mr. Chair, I know that this is something you have previously investigated over the years and you were well ahead of your time. As councillors will be aware now, the Lord Mayor has announced that we're asking residents to help select a second native floral emblem to sit alongside the poinsettia. This will also join our two faunal emblems, the koala and the tree frog, as official symbols of Brisbane. Now is a great time as we look ahead to the twenty thirty-two games to think about how we can best present our city through our official symbols. Who knows, perhaps the successful emblem will be part of the bouquets that are handed down in the medal ceremonies in twenty thirty-two. Mr. Chair, we have a two-stage consultation process to decide the new emblem. Stage one is open now and will be open for another month, six weeks in total. The first stage includes an online survey open to all residents. We are asking residents to identify what they believe to be the most important criteria to consider in choosing a new emblem, as well as making any suggestions on species that they would like to see considered. Mr. Chair, I'm thrilled to revise that so far we have had over five hundred unique submissions through the process. This is a remarkable result and there's still plenty more time for residents to get involved. Suggestions have included the bottle brush, the golden pender, the flame tree and the Brisbane lily. The Brisbane lily's botanical name is Prophyse cunninghami, but of course, I'm not playing any favourites. After the survey closes in mid-April and the results have been analysed, a short list of species will be created and made available for a public vote. I acknowledge that the petitioners did request that the new emblem replace and not sit beside the poinsettia. While I respect this point of view, we also respect the history of how the poinsettia was chosen and that's not something that we want to erase. I think there's some good synergy in having two floral emblems to go with our two faunal emblems and we look forward to finding out which species will make the shortlist. I thank the PACE team upstairs here in City Hall for their work in leading this process and of course, as well, the subject matter experts from the news branch and elsewhere in council who have lent their support and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on the floral emblem presentation and petition, I guess, but just mainly the presentation. I guess the question I've got is why are we having two floral emblems? If the one that was established in the nineteen twenties, early nineteen thirty, is now redundant for a whole heap of reasons, it's not a native, time has passed, community sentiment, there's a whole heap of reasons that this is being done. I guess my question is why would we have two floral emblems, which is what I understand is being proposed? I think that's confusing, unnecessary, and if we're going to adopt a new floral emblem, then that's something that we should consider doing so it's clear to everybody what the floral emblem would be. Look, it just, I, I don't know, and I'd be very interested in the feedback on this, is whether other cities have multiple floral emblems. I understand a lot of people have fauna and floral emblems, but I, I just don't see the necessity for two. So I support the idea that we're renewing this. I think picking a native to Brisbane is a good one. I'll be voting for the lemon myrtle, which is my favourite tree. But I, I just don't under- But I just don't understand why we're having two, and I think that that needs to be reconsidered so there's no confusion going forward.
Any further debate? Councillor Cunningham? Move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Petitions, are there any petitions? I have a petition. Rise to my feet, I have a petition here in relation to the cycleway along Terminal Drive along Lammington Avenue. Petitioners, there were hundreds from across the city and five from the Ward of Hamilton.
A petition, Chair, regarding the intersection of Brighton Road and Fourth and Fifth Avenues Sangate.
Thank you. Any further petitions? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that the petitions as received be presented to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one rising? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on two issues locally. The first one is the Graal Theatre, which I know that you're aware of at Lutwich there, and also to speak about some comments in State Parliament last week. First of all, I'd like to thank Graal Theatre at Lutwich. They're located in Clark Park in Lutwich there. It borders councillor Wines, councillor McLaughlin and myself. Last Saturday night, I had the absolute pleasure of going to the comedy of Tenors. My husband and I have not laughed so much. My congratulations to all the actors. They're extremely professional and a fabulous local group. So if you want to treat yourself, go on down to Graal Theatre at Lutwich for their next performance. It's well worth seeing. Mr Chair, the other thing I want to speak about is a comment that was made last week, but as we don't have parliamentary privilege in this place, I will choose my words carefully. Last week in State Parliament, the member for Stafford, instead of talking about the crime wave which is sweeping his electorate, or the ongoing ramping issues that affect his constituents seeking timely medical help, the member for Stafford chose his three minutes to have a go at me and the Lord Mayor over the Stafford Bowls Club. Well, Mr Chair, I cannot let that go without a rebuttal. The member for Stafford, who was first elected in 2020, still has not responded to my 15 requests for a meeting discussed joint issues that affect our constituents. Can you believe it, Mr Chair? Fifteen times I have written to him asking for a meeting with not even the courtesy of a reply. But I shouldn't take it to heart because I am told by the ALP members that we jointly represent, that he won't meet with them either. Unbelievable that a state member won't even meet with the very people that pre-select him. But it gets better. I was recently talking to an elder of the Labor Party in our part of the world. Now, this fellow has year in, year out, sat with Labor corps flutes and with the Labor candidates, including the state member, handing out elections for all the Labor candidates. Well, this gentleman was in the local commissary the other day, and guess who was there? Yes, it was the local state member. But instead of walking over and having a chat with this supporter and worker, he turned around and walked out. Didn't even say hello, didn't talk to the person. So he won't meet with me, and he won't even talk to his local supporters. The member for Stafford wanted to have a go at me for recognising the great work that the Stafford Community Hub does. I will acknowledge, so that the member does not say I'm attempting to take ownership of it, that the hub is actually in councillor Davis' ward in McDowell. But I will also say it's in Stafford, it's in Keong Park, it's on the boundary of councillor Davis and myself. It is also the home of Stafford Meals on Wheels, which, yes, I have delivered for them as well. I must make it clear that communities are not defined by political boundaries. Mr Chair, the member for Stafford criticised council for the state of the building at Stafford Bowls Club. If the member for Stafford had taken the opportunity to meet with me on one of those 15 occasions that I requested, he might know better the history of the site and how through the inactions of the state government over four years led crushers to reassign the lease because the state dragged their feet on approving their liquor licensing. Now, Mr Chair, the member for Stafford certainly knows that gambling is regulated by the state government. Actually, he would know more than passing knowledge of this legislation because he was the chief of staff to the then Attorney General of Eddard. It is interesting that he is claiming to take credit for the BRC to public consult over the application, even though the member could literally walk out of his office 200 metres from his office door to the Stafford Tavern and put $2 through one of the 200 poker machines they have. Did he object to them, or is he just playing politics? And it would seem that the member for Stafford turns a blind eye, in fact, to one of the most local opponents on social media and all the community pages against BRC and against the Stafford Bowls Club, who actually works for him and actually works for another state member. Does he support this when this particular person owns racehorses? Owns a number of racehorses, I hear, is a racehorse trainer. And in fact, his racehorse, from what I hear, because I don't go to the track, had a good win only a few weeks ago. How do you spell hypocrisy? I recently met with community members and stakeholders, including leasing BRC, and it was a respectful meeting, and questions were answered, asked and answered. The minutes were put out, there's a few minor changes by the people who attended the meeting that have been taking place right now. So those minutes will be distributed very shortly to the community. I'm not sure why the member for Stafford won't meet with me to discuss local issues. I'm not sure why I ran into him on Remembrance Day and mentioned to him that I was sending the 15th request for a meeting, that he verbally attacked me. And mentioning this to him, taking the opportunity to mention that he had not responded to my previous 14 requests is not politicising the day. I found his remarks and his aggression totally offensive, as, like many other Australians, I too have had family members killed in the Great Wars. And also, as most of you will know, my son is an active member of the Defence Force, which I'm immensely proud. So, Mr Chair, I place the challenge for the member of Stafford to meet with me to discuss issues that affect our joint residents, instead of hiding behind parliamentary privilege to have a swipe. The member for Stafford, please remember that we, yes, myself, councillor Hammond, and yourself, represent the same people, they all voted for us just because they switched political alliances, the same people voted for both of us. So I give you the challenge, there it is, because you won't meet with me, won't talk to me, come on, pick up the phone, send an email to the Magent Ward, and I'm sure we can range a timely meeting. Thank you.
Any further general business? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. Just wanted to place on the record and draw to councillor Davis's attention an opportunity for new parkland in Highgate Hill. I've written to the mayor about this previously, but I guess it probably didn't make it through the proper channels because it was in the lead-up to the last council election, in fact. But at the corner of Gladstone Road and Hazelwood Street in Highgate Hill, there's an old water reservoir, which is one of the oldest reservoirs in the city. It was initially installed to provide water for a lot of Highgate Hill. And it's still council-owned property, and Queensland Urban Utilities owns and manages the actual water treatment facility that's still there. So it's an active facility and it serves an important purpose as local infrastructure. But I do think it's also an opportunity to create new public green space in an area where there's really high demand for parkland and in an area where it's obviously very difficult for the council to secure land for new parks. So I'm putting that location on councillor Davis's radar. The challenge is, of course, that you would have to build over the top of the reservoir, but I'm aware that in a few other reservoir sites around the city, the council has essentially created public spaces that are accessible and we've turned, I think it's the inaugural reservoir, actually, isn't it? No. What's the hill on the north side? I used to ride my bike around there.
Eldon Hill.
That's right, that's it. Yeah, Eldon Hill, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Used to ride my bike up there before, it was a public space, but it's a lovely spot now, and that's a really nice lookout where council has taken essential infrastructure and created space on top for it to be accessible to the public. And I think maybe there's an opportunity to do the same thing here in Highgate Hill, just noting that it is the top of probably the most prominent inner-city hilltop. And so there's a really good opportunity to create a lookout park here that would become a destination not just for Highgate Hill locals, but for people from across the city because it would have great views to the south and the east and the west, actually. But I know the council officers are trying to find sites for new parkland and are having to get a bit more creative, and I do think that that location at the top of Highgate Hill could be one to investigate further. I'm not pretending it's going to be easy because it is still an active facility, but I imagine that with a reinforced roof and some creative design, we might be able to create that as a space that doubles as usable public space, though obviously we wouldn't be able to plant deep-rooted trees into the roof of the water reservoir. I did also just want to mention a couple of other locations that I'm kind of disappointed that the council officers haven't gotten back to me on. I'm not entirely sure what happened with these, but there was a little bit of investigation not long ago into the southern end of Boundary Street on the border of West End and Highgate Hill, so Boundary Street just south of Glenfield Street. This is an area of road reserve which is a cul-de-sac, and it joins some unallocated state government land. It's where the council was for a time proposing to land the St Luciford Bridge, but council has since decided that a bridge won't be required at that location. So this is essentially an area of surplus road reserve that could be amalgamated with the neighbouring Boundary Street River View Park at the southern end of Boundary Street. So we have an existing small park there, but by converting a section of what's currently a cul-de-sac, bitumen, converting that into additional green space, we could significantly expand that park and make it much more usable for the local community. The cul-de-sac doesn't have any driveways off it and is not an essential access point for any adjoining properties. So there's another really good opportunity there to create several hundred square metres of additional green space, which for residents in that precinct is actually quite a lot, believe it or not. So hopefully that's another one that the council administration can look into a little more closely. I did note with interest councillor Adams's comments earlier about South Bank Parkland and why I seem to always ignore that when I say that there's not enough parkland in the south side. The reality is that even if you do add in South Bank Parkland, the ratio and the amount of public green space that's available to local residents in the inner south side is far lower than almost anywhere else in the city, with the exception of a few parts of Central Ward and a few parts of Paddington Ward. The sheer number of people who already live in that 4101 postcode, I think, is difficult for some councillors to get their heads around. We're talking thousands and thousands of people who don't have any private green space and who don't really have any other large parks in the area. The only other existing park along that West End riverfront is Davies Park, which is mostly leased football fields. And we've got a real strong need for more sports fields, so that one footy club has the lease over two fields, but there's also West End Soccer Club, which I think now has nine teams, but no dedicated field of their own. So there's definitely a need for more public green space, and I was disappointed that councillor Adams was suggesting that the, the thing is, the one hectare and the 3,000 square metres on the industrial sites that are already identified in the LGIP, I was disappointed that she was suggesting that that was sufficient. It's not enough to cater for existing need from the local population, let alone for future growth. So we definitely do need more public green space in the inner south side, and that's the case for West End and South Brisbane, just as it's the case for Woolangaba. So councillor Davis, I'm here ready and willing to work with you. I keep emailing through the offices and saying, what about this site? What about that site? There's still that vacant block of land along Montague Road that I think the council looked at and decided it wasn't suitable because it was too small by itself, but I still think we should be acquiring it strategically to amalgamate with neighbouring blocks later on. If you're interested, that's 358 Montague Road. It's a vacant block of land that's been sitting there for a long time, and the neighbouring sites could in future be repurposed as parkland as well. So I'm trying to work with the administration and suggest opportunities here, and I'm pretty disappointed that we've had an increase of about 15,000 people in that area in the last few years, and the total net increase in parkland has been about 800 square metres. But then you have to subtract from that some of the new infrastructure that's gone into existing parks. So I don't even know if I should say it's a net increase of 800 square metres, it's more like a net increase of about 50 square metres of parkland to cater for 15,000, 16,000 residents. So you're cramming a lot of people into my ward, I think I'm being very patient about it. I know there's some commentary in this chamber that I object to every new development, which is not true. And I think, in all fairness, I'm actually probably one of the more staunch defenders of medium-density development in this chamber. We've had a lot of new development in West End and in Woolangaba and Kangaroo Point, and I don't organise a protest or kick up a fuss about every single one of those projects. But we do need the infrastructure to cater for that growing population. We need new parkland, we need more community facilities. Councillor Howard's team still hasn't confirmed what's going to happen with the future of the West End Library and the proposed West End Community Centre. There's a project they're identifying in the LGIP, and we still don't have any clarity about when that community facility is going to be delivered. So there's still a very real pressing and growing need for public parkland in the inner south side. And this isn't just about the amenity of local residents in terms of having somewhere to kick a ball around or fly a kite or what have you. It's also a question of the urban heat island effect and the fact that with so much concrete and steel and bitumen in these areas, the inner city is getting hotter and hotter. That means more electricity usage on air conditioners, it means less comfortable walking routes for people who try to travel by active transport. We need to cool down the inner city, and one of the best ways to do that is to create more green space and to find more room for trees and more canopy cover. So this is an issue that the administration needs to be paying more attention to, and I'm a bit disappointed that the council keeps kicking the can down the road on this one. I did also just want to note, I mentioned this last, I think, the other week in the chamber, and still haven't had a proper briefing from the officers, and I guess it crosses responsibilities between councillor Howard and councillor Marks and councillor Davis. But we've got quite a few tents in Musgrave Park, and Panieri wants to fence off the park for about 10 days. They've got like a six or seven day set-up time, two-day festival, and then another couple of days of pack-up afterwards. So I have not been told what the council's plan is for the homeless people who are sleeping in that park. I think if the council is approving Panieri to close off the entire park for more than a week, then the council should be offering to pay for some hotel accommodation for those rough sleepers so they can get a bit of stability and maybe wash their clothes and have some dry cover for a change. But if the council's not providing a housing option for those rough sleepers who are currently in the park, then Panieri Festival needs to do that themselves. I will also just note for councillor Marks's attention, there's been a bit of a scam going on at the moment for the so-called Easter Carnival, where some perhaps questionable event organisers have started selling tickets to an event in Musgrave Park, promising the world, but they haven't actually secured a park booking. It's one of those interesting ones, some of you might be familiar with the, I think it was the Dinosaur Festival or something like that recently, where basically scammers were selling tickets to an event that didn't really happen. And now there's a proposed Easter Carnival in Musgrave Park, which is promising circus rides and petting zoo and train rides and all sorts of stuff that they don't have approval for, but they are selling tickets. So watch that space.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the education minister's response to a recent council motion. Mr Chair, as the chamber merry call in the council meeting on 28th of February, this chamber voted unanimously to support the motion I put forward to call on the state government to purchase land in Brisbane to build new schools and to consult Brisbane City Council on the expected school capacity and advice on the projected infrastructure needed to support the increasing student enrolments in high-growth area. Mr Chair, a week later after the Mr Chair, a week later after the minutes were published, I sent a letter to Minister Grace advising her of council's motion. So far, I have not received a formal reply from the minister. But interestingly, the minister issued a media statement called stabilising enrolment's changes, changes school timetable. Mr Chair, the minister made five points in her statement. First point, two schools were open in 2024, well, now in Brisbane. Second point, six new schools were open in 2025, again, none of them in Brisbane. Third point, new sites needed in Parkridge and Brisbane's inner west, which shows state government's failure to plan the new schools properly, as councillor Davis did in her one of the question replies today. The state did not do that well. Fourth point, the state government say they have opened 25 new schools and invested $10 billion in education infrastructure across the state since 2015. Out of 25 schools, only one was built in Brisbane. That was built while they were trying to save the former deputy premier. And there was no consultation with Brisbane City Council about the impacts of additional school facilities and student numbers on local infrastructure. And finally, Labour is once again trying to politicise the issue by referring back to the Newman Government, ignoring the fact that they have been in government for over eight years and have only been out of power for four years and 10 months in the previous 33 years. Mr Chair, the motion passed in this chamber was simple. Brisbane as the state's capital city and the fastest-growing area needs more schools. In the media statement, there is a paragraph reads, stabilising enrolments means there's currently capacity for around 600 extra students in the existing local state schools. A new state school is therefore not required as soon as anticipated. Mr Chair, I seriously think the minister needs to sit for an IQ test. When you build schools everywhere other than Brisbane and telling Brisbane students, there are places in Redland Bay or Bellburn Park because we build new schools over there, then you either need to do an IQ test, or you just have to admit you have failed to plan for the growing population in the state's capital. Mr Chair, although I have not yet received formal reply from the minister, I'm most disappointed to see once again the state Labour government is ignoring the needs of Brisbane residents and failing to plan for the future of our city.
Any further general business? councillor Strunk?
Yes, Mr Chair, I rise to speak about some events that are going to take place and one that already has taken place. The first one is the Urban Music Festival called Shima, which is through the Connected Communities. That's taking place at DJ Sherrington Park on the 15th. And First Nations Youth Festival is also taking place down at DJ Sherrington on the 3rd of April. Now, I mention these two because something has arisen that possibly councillor Marks can have a look into as Chair of City Standards. And, you know, all the councillors here would know that, you know, when you have festivals, you can access some of those free recycled and general waste bins for that particular event. And you simply ring up and book them. Now, there is only 75, I believe, pairs that can be accessed across Brisbane, and maybe there should be more. But what's been happening is that that music festival, the Urban Music Festival that took place, they recently held one of those, I believe, at Musgrave Park, and were able to access those bins. But when they came out to DJ Sherrington, the same organisers came out to DJ Sherrington, they found out that they were going to not be able to access them because some of the stalls at the festival were charging money and they were making profit. Now, honestly, and when we looked into it and we said, well, hang on a minute, that sort of doesn't make sense because we've had other festivals that have accessed those, that have had stalls, even food trucks in some cases, and we've never had an issue. And so I don't know if it's been a policy change, or maybe it was an existing policy that's now being implemented rigorously. But I would like the chair to have a look into this because both the festivals are actually now being impacted in this area. Now, all they do is to try to raise a bit of money through, you know, through renting out the stall space, right? And of course, the stall holders then have to sell some product to actually pay for that. And all they want to do is to try to cover their costs, right, of holding the festival. It's not a money-making festival that's going to be able to carry money over to the next festival, I wouldn't think. So, and we do have a number of other festivals coming up which have been able to access those bins as well. We have the Hawke Dragon Boat Race Festival coming up as well. There's the Forest Lake Festival, which we were able to grab those bins last year as well. And now we have an Easter Extravaganza coming up as well. So I just raised that tonight, or this afternoon, because I think there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect as to who can access those bins and who can't. So I would encourage the chair to have a look into that. Now, finally, last weekend, we had the fifth anniversary of Park Run at Forest Lake, and there was a great turnout, as you can probably expect for these anniversary runs, more than probably the average. Because they hold them each Saturday, of course, at 7am, and I was there. You had to get up pretty early. Yes, yes, I didn't want to get a heart attack, so I walked. I didn't run. But anyways, I just want to thank Shirley, Jo and Eric and Rue, who undertake this work to arrange the park runs every Saturday at 7am. I just want to congratulate them for their commitment to the community. It's a really great program. If you haven't got one in your wards, look to have one because it really is, it just sends a message about health and looking after yourself, and they also have a bit of fun as well, which is probably half the battle of getting people to come out. Anyways, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? councillor Mackay?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about a roundtable that we held last night in Indrapilly. As you may or may not be aware, there is significant push in the local western suburbs for safe and secure biking facilities. Last night, we held a roundtable hosted at the Indrapilly Anglican Church on Lambert Road, and we had a number of different stakeholders. And I was pleased to have councillor Murphy in attendance in his role as the Chair of the council's Transport Committee. We also had a facilitator, and his name was Ian Plowman. Ian is a retired organisational psychologist with 30 years in the game, and Ian has developed a roundtable methodology that we used last night. We had three tables of five people, and we had stakeholders, including representatives from St Peters, Bridgerton, Indrapilly High and Ambrose Tracy, which are the four local high schools. We also had neighbours, cycle advocates, political representatives, town planner and a youth influence. We only had one town planner, too, councillor Sri, so, you know, it was a representation of the mix. So I'm really glad councillor Sri's brought that up because what we tried to do is not to stack a roundtable. I've been to a few Greens things, and I know that they generally get off track because they have people of the same sort of persuasion, seeing from the same hymn sheet, and it's not exactly representative. But this roundtable was great because we had lots of people from lots of different backgrounds with lots of different vested interests. And they sat around at three tables with five people. And they said, the facilitator said, what ideas do you have that will assist in informing council's deliberations with respect to improving active transport options, being cycling and pedestrian activities between the current bikeway at Indrapilly Station and the Indrapilly Schools precinct? Now, while some people may go and glue themselves to road to make a point, what we did was actually do some constructive work to work through what the different interests' outcomes might be for these different people. And I'm thrilled to say that people went into that meeting last night with some confirmation bias that was eroded, and they took on board different views of different stakeholders. And I think everyone walked away last night and they were very happy with the outcome. What we're going to do from here is report back with a report to councillor Murphy so he can understand all of the different views, some of the suggestions that were put forward, and some of the negatives of each of those points. So all in all, I'd like to say thank you to all of the participants, thank you to the church for hosting us. And this is the first of our roundtables because we are going to host more. We've got a youth roundtable coming up. Shame councillor Sri's left the chamber for the evening, so he didn't get to hear me say that. We've also got a crime one coming up. Councillor Sri might be interested in that one as well, because there are people who in the local area are particularly concerned about some of the crime issues. They don't support defunding the police, they don't support people going and shoplifting, they don't support people squatting in other people's homes, and they don't support MDMA being made legal and available to teenagers. So these are some of the issues that we might raise at these crime forums. And we do have a couple of other roundtables that will be developed, but I am looking forward to the next one, which is the youth roundtable, which will be held on Wednesday, the 12th of April, in Queensland Youth Week. And thank you for your indulgence there, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Mackay. Any further general business? No further general business? I declare the meeting closed.